I'll rise, please. Before we begin tonight, we'd like to recognize two noteworthy individuals who have passed away. Paul Turbide being one, a surveyor, civil engineer, a man who although he never served the city directly in any elected or appointed capacity, was always available when we called upon him to give us the meats and bounds on a property, survey something, and supply us information that we needed to make informed decisions. And the second individual, William Plant, who at the venerable age of 97 passed away, and I'm sure you're aware of that having, if you've read the newspaper recently, he's a former managing editor of the Newburyport Daily News, a passionate, passionate advocate of press freedoms, and also one of the key members of the Newburyport Area Industrial Development Corporation that created the Dexter Green that employs nearly 2,000 people on a daily basis. And I will personally remember Bill Plant for his fabulous stories. There were never short stories. And again, for the years when I was working in the State House, he was highly visible and represented Newburyport with great distinction. Just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Tantar.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Zee.
Present.
Counselor Dublin.
Here.
Counselor O'Leary.
Present.
Counselor Iggerman.
Yeah.
Counselor Jinta.
Present.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Bryan is absent. Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counsel President Khan.
Present. Are there any late filed items?
There's one late filed item the councils will see on their desk, is the insurance certificate, communication to 85 for the Harvest Fall Festival.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late filed items?
Second.
Move in second to waive the rules and admit this late filed item. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we'll take that up in communications, I believe. And now it's time for public comment. We have a full house, though. Jen Moskin, I believe it is, from Myrtle Avenue. This is first. I'm sorry if I mispronounce your names.
My name's actually Jen Groskin. I am on the agenda at number 11, and I just wanted to introduce myself. I've been nominated to serve on the HRC, the Human Rights Commission, and just ask council if they had any questions, and just if I don't know you are ready, introduce myself, that's all.
Any questions from councils? Well, welcome aboard. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Doug Muir.
Thank you. I'm Doug Muir, 10 Hancock Street, and I'm the board chair of the Newburyport Maritime Society and the Custom House Museum. And I'm speaking to the slate roof repair item, which is item 15, I think, in the agenda. I understand that this can't be taken up tonight for action by the council, but I wanted to speak to it, and we have others here who would like to speak to it as well. This is the third Community Preservation Act application that the museum has made. We were awarded funds in 2013 and 2017 for additional roofing work and pointing work on the flashing on the observatory, and this one is a bigger one. This one involves replacing the slate roof. As many of you probably know, making that building watertight has been a major challenge for us over the years. It involved new windows, it involved repointing, and the aforementioned projects on the roof. We feel we've always been good stewards of the money we've received from CPC and the city, and this will be no exception. We're troubled by the fact that this particular application has been troubling to the council, and we hope that the council can reconsider it. It's important to us, as a small museum, as a small nonprofit, $101,000 doesn't grow on trees. I'm sure it doesn't for the city either. So when the time comes, we hope that the council will take another look at this and will consider the merits of the project in terms of the building, and not necessarily get distracted by the fact that there are current issues, and we know what they are. There are current issues having to do with the way the land will be transferred. This has nothing to do with that, has to do with a leaky roof that we want to have repaired. This would be the case whether it is owned by the city, by the NRA, or by the museum, or by some other entity. It's an important historic building, and it needs to be watertight. Our contents, our artifacts, need to be preserved, and we would hope that you would recognize the need to do that. Thank you.
Tim Felter.
Good evening, Tim Felter. I am a resident of beloved Mosley Place. I'm the treasurer of the Custom House Maritime Museum, Newburyport Maritime Society, and working here in town for seven years. When I first came to town, I had the chance to see a little bit about the custom house. I had the chance to learn more and was invited to join the board. Soon thereafter, I had a chance to visit through the whole property, get up into the attic and see the area where some of our artifacts were kept. Two things were notable about that visit. Number one was the plastic that was over everything, and the second was the water stains around the wood. It was clear that a few years ago that there was work to be done to make sure that the building was safe and secure. Three years ago, I moved to Newburyport with my wife, and one of the things that attracted us here was the commitment of the community to make it a place where people wanted to live and be a part of. And I have to say, I found it very discouraging a couple weeks ago when I heard that the request for money to take care of this 1835 building had been turned down. I like to think that this is a community that cares about its heritage, and that I hope that the council will have the chance to revisit this issue and will in fact vote then to support taking care of a very historic building here in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Williams.
Considerably shorter than the... There we go. My wife and I moved here 31 years ago. We bought a house on Plum Island, and we, every year, have trouble with water, hitting the house and doing damage. The Customs House has been here far longer than that. It's a historic, significant part of Newburyport, and no matter what you do, it will always be an asset to the town of Newburyport. And one of the things that should be on the top of your agenda is to make sure that you do nothing to risk that asset. Whether you own the property or don't own the property, it will always be an asset of this town. And so I ask you that when this comes up to reconsideration, that you join, like my wife and I, who have given money to repair that roof and gone to fundraisers to repair that roof, that you reconsider what you did last time and help preserve and keep the significance of that building, what it is, and all the artifacts in it, safe. Thank you.
Mary Fitzsimmons.
Mary Fitzsimmons, resident of 7 Arlington Street, and I'm here to speak about marijuana. I believe that the retail sales of recreational marijuana would not be beneficial business for the people of Newburyport. Along with others, I'm concerned about our children and teens, the increased access they would have to pot if it were sold in our city. The high school, middle school, and IC kids enjoy hanging out downtown after school, or they're in the Story Avenue area of town. While they're not usually hanging out by the traffic circle, most of you acknowledge that the traffic circle isn't a great area for the pot shops. It's a small area with little parking and dangerous traffic-wise. Listening to the city council discussions in recent months, it seems that the traffic circle is a default area for the city council to allow pot shops, for now. Looking ahead in time, you'll expand sales, I know, toward 5, Story Avenue, the ward that voted against legalizing marijuana in Massachusetts, or expand sales to downtown, where there's opposition, or maybe to all of these areas. As the voters of Newburyport consider the realities of what legalized marijuana means, what do they consider, what do they want now? Please ask them. I request that you city councillors put the referendum question on the sales of recreational marijuana in Newburyport on the November 6 ballot to allow the residents of Newburyport to express their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rita McHalek.
Rita McHalek, 53, Warren Street. I've been a licensed customs house broker for over 40 years. There isn't a building I love more in Newburyport than the customs house. It has rich history to it, and it is a huge asset. I agree with what everybody said tonight about securing the roof and not, you know, preventing the damage that could occur through water, and water is very dangerous. And I agree with that, and I support everything they said. The customs house sent out their newsletter to their members, and that's why I'm here, because frankly, I hadn't known about it before, and I read it, and I was enraged and wrote down a two-minute lecture about how important customs houses are. But I'm going to put that all aside, because shortly before I came tonight, I read an explanation on why the council did reject it, and for what reasons, that was written by Council Iggerman. And I don't know that the vast majority here tonight read that. I read it, and I agreed with it. I agree with both parties. And I hope that for the benefit of the general public and customs house members, they could read what Councilman Iggerman wrote. I don't, I think it's more complicated than just who owns the property. I think what they're centering, or what the council is centering on, and I don't know, I didn't hear you speak about it, is some restrictions on preservation on what the museum organization can do with it as a nonprofit. So I might have that a little bit wrong, I could be a little bit wrong, but the gist of what I want to say is, both parties have an interest in that building, and I hope that they can compromise and come together and get the funds from that fund from Newburyport in order to help it, and in exchange that they can get whatever the city is asking for by way of preservation restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Bernhard.
Hi, Susan Bernhard, 20 Winwood Drive. I'm here to speak about item 15 as well. We were here hoping that it wasn't going to be tabled, so a little disappointed. I am a board member of the custom house, just for informational purposes. I was asked to join the board a year and a half ago. I recently had moved up here six years ago, and as a new visitor, a resident of town, I joined everything, right? I joined the firehouse, I joined the custom house. I have a true belief that if you're a resident here, the only way to make it vibrant is to be active in support of everything that makes it, why we bought here. So at my board meeting, I was away on business, and I found out about the vote last week, and I was so disappointed because the CPA money is meant just for preservation. It wasn't meant for, and the committee and such went through the grant, chose the grant was viable, and to have a council come in and say, no, all your work was for naught, that was very disappointing. So I hope that you will reconsider voting for this measure again and supporting this roof. Thank you.
Thank you. The last name on my list is Jeanette Isabella.
So, Jeanette Isabella, 1 Lime Street. Thank you for all of your hard work on all of these difficult subjects, but I want to speak in favor of funding the roof at the custom house. I've been a member there for a long time, and I've just seen the improvement that's been made over the years. I mean, a lot of us remember when it was closed up, and, you know, we've all heard that it was a junkyard. I mean, and now it's just beautiful. And everything we can do to preserve a building like that, I think we should do. And I don't know what the nuances are of all the arguments, and I don't know what Councilman Iggerman wrote. I'm sure it was good and well thought out, but also, we have a building that is historic, not just here, but in the country. You know, one of the proudest things we can say is the person who designed it also designed the Washington Monument. I mean, who gets to say that? So we really have a jewel here, and I wasn't going to say this, but I will. I recently, not recently, some time ago, I began a fund to help preserve the paintings in the custom house that are in need of repair. And I hate to see the beautiful and valuable paintings and other artifacts that we have there get damaged because, you know, we're not coming up with this money. And I don't know if you can vote, you know, when it comes, I don't know what the legalities are, but at some point, it'll probably come back to you, and I just want to say, please do it, whenever you can, however you can. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment period. I want to thank everyone for staying within the two-minute time period. It's time for a presentation about the Bartlett Mall, and how do we want to proceed? We have a slideshow?
Yes, we have a slideshow. We have a handout later, because the slideshow is getting too long. So I published a booklet that you can take home later, because you're going to be so excited about this, you're going to say, I want more.
Would you introduce yourself to the councilors?
I'm Chuck Griffin. I practice up at the old jail in Newburyport.
He's been in jail for years and years.
Since 87, yes, sir. Thank you for this time. Go ahead. I'm going to give a talk here, just very briefly, is what is the Bartlett Mall? Why is it important?
Let me just interrupt. The microphone is important because there are people watching.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you for that. So it's a, this, the talk I wanted to give is why is this place important? And it is the only place that I know of in Newburyport where if an Indian came back through before the white man arrived, or the original settlers came to town, that you could still see something and recognize it. It's pretty amazing for that. So the settlers came here, as you know, in 1635, and as you can, you can go to the next one. And Newburyport split off from Newbury in 1764, and intriguing thing about that process, I've tried to show in color here, always in this light blue-green, that every time I show that color, it means that a group like you set in council and made these decisions. So we have the problem of them moving up here, then they settled down at the old site. The people that had good chunks of land said, I like it just fine. The people that didn't, which was the majority, said, we want to go up to what became Newburyport. So you have this split off, and this is an early drawing from 1766, showing all the industry around Bartlett Mall. It had a rope walk, it had a windmill, it had clay pits, it had all the sorts of things because they used it for industry after they watered their cattle there earlier. Next. And the earliest picture we have, of course, is across Bartlett Mall. You can see the bull down there and the ducks, scale problem, and then you can see the rope walk, and the town of Newburyport beyond Salisbury in the distance. Next. So the industrial commons included those things and others. I'm not going to spend any time on that because I'm here to talk about the beautification. Next. Tracy, you know Nathaniel Tracy, he lived in our library, and he asked to have permission from a group like yourselves to plant trees where the rope walk stood. That was 239 and a half years ago. We're coming up to the 240th anniversary, to give you an idea of the timelines. We're almost at a quarter of 1,000 years. The Herald pointed out in a column in 1801 that this area would make a very nice place for a walk. You can read it yourselves. I'll try not to do too much of that for you tonight, and it's in the booklet, if you get tired of reading. But it was an offer, and Edwin Bartlett, who was the son of the richest man in town, William Bartlett, he came in and said, you know, there's a ravine, let's fill up that ravine at the head of Green Street, and we can make some improvements here that will really go down in time. That's 1801. And people come out and help. Now, the fascinating thing is that the city of Newbury, I mean, Newbury and Newburyport were at a war over this. Matter of fact, Newbury was suing Newburyport over the use of the Mall. They said it's ours. But Newburyport in its way, wise way, just ignored Newbury. And here you are, March 9, with Edmund Bartlett at the top, Greenleaf, John Toppen, all these names that you know if you're a history buff, that are our forefathers here, they just signed this thing, by golly, we're going to survey around the park, just as if it's ours. Next. And here you can see that the court said to the town, we need a better place when we have our traveling court. Why don't you work with us, and we'll go 50-50 on a courthouse? And Newburyport entered into that. They disagreed about the location. Newburyport says, put it on Pleasant Street, and the judges said, no, we like Green Street, we like what's going on up there. And then they needed an architect, and they decided to hire the police chief of Boston, Charles Bullfinch, who did this sort of thing as a hobby. He received, he received almost no money for this. He was doing these wonderful buildings, getting tiny fees, bankrupt a couple of times, and here you are in 1789, he's doing the State House in Boston. Next. Here's the drawing that we just did recently, showing what he did for Newburyport. This is from the Bullfinch drawings. We're very, very lucky. We have almost the only set of original documents done by Charles Bullfinch. And so we took those drawings, checked it against the buildings where the arcade was, the joints are still there, and that's what we had at one time until 1854, when Newburyport sold in 1834, it's half interest in it, to improve the upstairs with what we call the firehouse today. And they took that money, and the court said, well, since you folks are out of here, we're going to do what we want, and they changed it, Bullfinch's design, to this. Next. The only part of Bullfinch that's remaining on that building is the backside. The roof here is different, and the chimney, of course, is new. Next. Now here's the jail, taken in the earliest photograph, taken in the Americas, recently we think it's the earliest taken outdoors, November 1839. So if you think of a 30, of Civil War photographs, being old, think of this, because that's 1862, 1 and 2. Here you are. And Perkins took it, and he developed the fixer and stop bath. Next. But look across, there's a jail on the left. This is a rare picture because it's a stereo view that's dated. R.E. Mosley wrote the date, 1867 on the back. It's the only one I've ever seen that is dated. And note that on the right, just to the left of the tall building, which of course is the courthouse, you'll see a school in the distance, it's dark there, and then to the left is a driveway going up. And here's another early building looking the other direction where there is a school. Next. And then you have the Washington statue dedicated. I'm putting dates here because I'm able to look at almost any picture now, if there's buildings or fences in it, to tell generally when it was taken. So now the improvements, the Herald said, if we could fix this place, it wouldn't cost much, and we'd have one of the most beautiful ornaments which are enjoyed by any city in the country. And this was the point of this, these buildings, the biggest white building in the center, was initially a home for Poor, Mr. Poor, and people that had no money were along that street, and of course, with time, all that changed, and here you have this come up for sale. And one of the benefactors in Newburyport purchased it for the city for later. Great vision. This is your archivist's she-off, this is in the library. Sharon Spieldener is an amazingly talented person, and here she is at the historic society finding all these records a year ago on the Mall Improvement Association. So now we know what was proposed, what was done, what wasn't done. It's an astounding set of documents, if you're interested in this sort of thing. And the Mall Improvement Association said this about it, that this has been neglected, so no son of Newburyport, just a little bit sexist, can look upon them without feeling a feeling of disappointment and mortification. Next. And this other ad in their fundraising piece, it has advantages, it's high and central, and without great expense, can be made attractive and ornamental. They hired Charles Elliott, very famous landscape architect that worked with Olmsted, matter of fact, replaced Olmsted. Olmsted was old when Elliott met him, and many of the things that Olmsted gets credit for, the parks in Boston, many areas of the country, Elliott really did that work. So to have something done by Elliott, we're very, very fortunate. And in his first letter, we have all these correspondence, we have his business card, his very first letter, his first sentence is this, that you're determined that your ancient commons shall be made more attractive and useful. So he was calling it the ancient in 1887. So this is his first plan. He did two, and this is the one that everyone since that time has hyped and talked about. But this shows what he planned to do, and the steep banks that were there were there, but they're in rough shape. The neighbors are actually suing the city because this place was in such a bad state of repair. Next. Later, here you are, a year later, he's writing again, and this is a drawing that no one's had until this time, to my knowledge. No one ever refers to it. And this is where he shows on the lower right-hand corner, an area that we're interested now on the children's playground, he shows in pencil there, enlarging that. That was an 11-foot fill, and they took all the excess fill and dumped it at that place and never finished shaping it. Next. So they wrote a wonderful report in 89. I'm not putting it here because, but it's worth reading. You'd find everything they did. So this was taken right after, and we know that because the fountain came in 91. There is no fountain here. So this is a hand-colored photo, and if you look at the trees in the distance, you notice they're all pruned high. Elliott's idea was, he wanted long distant views. So if you drove around this, or walked around it, or within it, you looked straight through it. There was no place where the view was constrained. The slopes were beautifully crafted. In my eye, that's maybe outside of the water, but I really think it's the slopes that make that park so extraordinary compared to other public parks that I've visited. So the, here, those are just three or four slides to show you the order, the care that was taken, and the planting of the trees early by the city, and then later cleaned up and fixed by Mr. Elliott and the Mall Improvement Association. So here's Edmund Mosley's fountain. He was the biggest benefactor. He gave twice the amount of money, he and his family, that any other benefactor did, and bought the land. He also bought the addition for the library, and he was director, I think ran two banks in town. He was a rather remarkable individual. But here you can see the trees spaced. You can see in the distant left of center, about halfway between the fountain, the left edge of the picture, you can see the roadway coming down and two people standing on it, and then it splits. More on that later. And then they have the Taggart Fountain, 1898, which was hit by vehicles. It used to be in this building. The pieces of it slowly disappeared over time. We don't know where the horse is. We don't know where the fountain is. But we hope to rebuild it. But we hope to rebuild it, the promenade, the way we think it looked in 1900. Next. And so here's, do you think they succeeded? I think they really succeeded to take this park and make it one of the most beautiful ornaments in the city. Next. So then it come up to our time, sort of, 1914. Shirkcliff, who was a partner of Elliott. And the two of them formed the Landscape Architecture Department at Harvard. He's coming along and next. And you can see on the upper left corner, he says, this plan's an interpretation of the plan made by Elliott. Next. And here you have the plans that the city of Newburyport paid the Walker firm to do in 1999. And they say in their opening, next. The goal is to recreate the image of the Mall in accordance with Elliott's 1887 plan. So everybody that's been involved with this since that time has looked back to that as being the ideal. And I think there's solid reason for it. That set of plans was too much for the budget. The city hired in 2005, a new group, and they changed the scope and did some work that we're enjoying today. Next. So after 2005, we really didn't have a plan to follow. And we've had deterioration of slopes, trees not pruned. We have issues that were now getting resolved. More on that. And so here we've had wonderful work going on, but not really to any plan. Next. The slopes are deteriorating quite rapidly. This one actually, the top edge of this hill has gone beyond the earth that's behind it, just like it would in a raw state. The roadways are, we have big vehicles running around narrow tracks. Next. And here you can see, we just cut to pieces the hillside at times with our big trucks. Someday we need to get this water level established as one level. Another issue for another day. So the point is, is as these trees complete their useful life, which the city determines, then to get something in its place that fits the old way. Next. So starting last year, up to modern times, we've had acceptance of everybody involved with this, of the plans of 1887, 14, 2799, and 2005, agreement on what the next step should be, which is preserve what's valuable, restore what was, and adapt where appropriate. So Bartlett Mall Commission, much to their credit, a year ago did the first, far as we know, first Bartlett Mall Day ever, which was a raging success. And it's going to be done today or this next month on the 6th of October, the second one. Very successful. We're started repairing the slopes. Last December, we took some of the worst slope and started fixing it where the whole surface was eroding. Next. We're now, this just recently mowed the slopes for, I think, the first time in seven years. The idea was if you let the grass grow, it would help the pond. We've found that that's simply not true. And what it does is destroy the grass, which then in turn destroys the slopes. And after, now you can see with the second mowing, the slopes are beginning to look like they used to. And now the grass will have a chance compared to the bigger weeds. We are going to prune the trees this year. We just started on a few. And this winter that will be going up. These trees should all be pruned up above head height. Right now, you walk down through, you actually can hit your head on them. Next. And we're going to, we're working to complete the promenade to Auburn Street. Next. It looks, this wonderful area makes us look like we're in Brooklyn or something. And, but that promenade that comes down on the left needs to come on down, which it could not do when Kelly School is a school, and then reconfigure it. Next. And then the area around the edge, which was never really handled, and the people that, in the Mall Improvement Association said at the time, we haven't taken care of that because of the, we're out of here. Somebody else fixed it. Well, no one fixed it. So we need to get rid of the granite. And we have plans from 1927 showing how that driveway could be done. Next. So this is what we're proposing. This is to restore the approach from Auburn Street down as it was. This can be an accessible surface so people with a handicap can get into the, down to the mall area. And then redo the courtyard. We'd be tearing up all the asphalt, regrading that surface so it drains. It doesn't drain properly now. And then repositioning in the swings and the playground equipment. Next. So the ideas behind this, restore this, fix the slopes, mow them, view across the Mall. This is not a woods. We're not wanting informal plantings. It's the only place in Newburyport that we have a formal situation like this. And as existing trees fail, replace them with appropriate trees. Next. So we could get back and have this, and it's not terribly expensive. This is the, I think the cheapest thing we could do is protect what we have yet. Next. So I think the goal should be to restore the Mall and the courthouse to the way they were at their prime. Next. And so with your new ordinance, we've established a new Mall Improved Association 2.0. And the goals on that are, as you read, restore the vision, have sustainable, affordable improvements, and to raise funds. And we would do that through the Newburyport Parks Conservancy. We don't need to raise them or have our own finances. We need, the ask in this is that we just would like to have you folks sign on to the work that our, the people that came before us did and the councils that came before you. Thank you.
Jeff, before you leave us, are there questions of councilors about the Bartlett Mall and what these plans represent for us?
Good.
Well, I'm actually, phase one, water quality cleanup.
I'm sorry.
Water quality cleanup. What does that actually mean?
So I'm, I'm actually the speaker that's coming right after Charlie. And perhaps I can speak to that a little bit. So I'm Joanna Fernandez. I was, I was on the Bartlett Mall Commission. And I am here to quickly run you through the phases that were developed by the Parks Department and the Parks Commission as to the restoration. And give you an, just quick background as to what the Bartlett Mall Commission actually voted to approve and try to give you the quick update from the Parks Department that was provided to me by Lisa Reed. So quickly, I'm going to start with phase three, actually, because it has less going on there. So in February of 2018, and I should also say that, we have limited time, but there are extensive notes on our public meetings, especially in February of 2018, that document all of the public comments and all of the thought process that we had before we made these votes on the restoration phase. So I would direct City Council to look at those notes that are posted online. And there are, there's a summary in your packet too, that is a shortened version of that. But so phase three, in February of 2018, we, we approved the entirety of phase three. However, we said to the Parks Department, before you go ahead and restore the Swan Fountain, you need to make sure that the water is sufficiently clean or at least create a separate source of water for the fountain. So we don't put ourselves back in the same situation where the water running through the fountain is destroying the outside of the fountain. So the Parks Department gave us an update that said the Conservancy had already put, or already possessed $7,000 towards the Swan Fountain restoration. And recently, they were awarded a $20,000 grant in CPA funding to investigate why the fountain seems to be shifting. I don't think you've, we've all probably noticed that the fountain is going like this and we don't actually know why. And to hopefully develop a plan to stabilize it or to create a new foundation to support the restored fountain. So going to phase one, which involves the water quality cleanup. So that was something that was already going on prior to the restoration being presented to us, that the city had already hired Phoenix Revolution to install the Ocean Pure Water System, which is a reverse osmosis filtration system. It's been ongoing. The Parks Department has said that they expect to see results at the end of the fall with the most results showing at the end of next summer. And so in November of 2017, the Parks Commission and the Bartlett Mall Commission approved phase one in total. And then in February 2018, the Bartlett Mall Commission made a slight amendment and said, it was in response to public comments that there was concern that in mowing the grassy slopes and clearing vegetation from the water's edge, that that would actually affect the quality of the water. It is our belief as a commission that that won't actually happen. We reviewed this extensively. And the Parks Department had also been in discussions with the Conservation Commission that actually mowing the grass would likely not affect the water quality at all. And our amendment, however, was to pause if the Parks Department notices that there is an effect to the water quality and reassess what's going on. But that is not our expectation. So as far as Park Department updates, I've already updated you as to the water, the slopes. I think Charlie actually spoke to the slopes a bunch, so I won't repeat what he said. And another, another goal was to install a sandy beach around the edge as it was originally in the Elliott Designs. And that is something that the Parks Department is working in conjunction with the Conservation Committee on at the moment. And then jumping to phase two, I'm going to take this in two parts. So prune and plant trees according to the original tree planting plan and then reinstall the alley of elms on the second level of the Mall. There was a lot of public concern in both directions. One greatly in support of the Elliott plans, but also feedback from the public that they were concerned about losing shade trees. And so part of the restoration plans are to, to plant a lot of trees at the Mall, as you could see from Charlie's drawings. However, it does involve removing some of the existing trees. So, so Mike Hennessy, who's the Parks Manager and who is an arborist, slated 10 trees for removal over the course of three years. They are self-seeded trees. They are damaged. They are at the end of their lives and becoming hazardous or they're invasive. So they include self-seeded choke cherries, a damaged red maple, other Norway maples, and the two-willow trees. So again, the Bartlett Mall Commission was in support of the removal of these trees. However, we felt that if the Parks Department could, could plant all of the trees they would, they would like to plant successfully. And, and it, and not removing those trees that quickly, I'm sorry, let me back up. So if, if not removing the trees that quickly would not affect the success of the new trees, then we were encouraging them to slow down with their tree removal. So the Parks Department update is that they have initiated the removal of some trees. I believe it was the choke cherries and the damaged red maple that was already done. They've initiated pruning the trees and they've also purchased 50 disease-resistant Liberty Elms, which are currently being grown and will be ready for planting in the fall of 2019. So the second part of phase two is extending the promenade to Auburn Street and renovating and reconfiguring the basketball court and play area. So the Bartlett Mall Commission in February of 2018 improved this as well. And I bring this to your attention because part of reconfiguring the basketball court, the Bartlett Mall Commission felt very strongly if we were going to reconfigure the basketball court and renovate it, that there should no longer be snow parking available. This was highly controversial because there are 25 spaces that are being used roughly at the moment for snow parking. So it was our recommendation, obviously it was not our decision to make, that is a City Council decision, but it was our recommendation that the snow parking be removed. It's our feeling that if we're going to spend all of this money redoing a basketball court, whether that comes through grants or whether that comes through, I know there's a local developer in town that is seeking a variance and has offered to possibly redo the basketball court. However, it happens that it just doesn't make sense to redo the basketball court and then allow parking on it. And I realize that there's snow parking at other parks in town. However, no other park actually has parking on part of their park. So this is not a parking lot. This is the basketball court. So this is clarifying a difference there. So the city, I've been told, is working already on the relocation of snow emergency parking. So, so possible, snow parking could be moved, but I don't have any specific updates as to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's nice to see that some of our CPC money is going to good use. And we look forward to seeing these improvements done.
Oh, thank you.
While this is being handed out.
Wow, it is a book. Can I get an autograph?
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll read it autograph right now. After the show.
President McConnell, members of those City Council, going to hear from Washington City Council. Quick update, first and foremost, the Columbia gas explosions have had an absolute devastating impact on residents and businesses in Lawrence, Andover, and North Andover. We have been in touch with National Grid. And I posted this early on, that Newburyport is not part of Columbia's system, but it certainly has generated lots of anxiety and concerns about gas and the age of our system and the status of our system. National Grid is offering support to the effort in Merrimack Valley, but has been in touch with us. They have sent a memo I attached to your update that will also be posted on the city website. And they're working on a date with us to come and hold a public meeting so people could ask questions about our existing system. And we anticipate that happening sometime in mid-October. I would also like to recognize our Fire Department, who of course, along with many, many other departments, supported the effort in Merrimack Valley, providing mutual aid and support. And finally, I would also like to recognize our amazing athletes across the city who organized a massive collection of all kinds of needed supplies and clothing and water for residents and businesses in Merrimack Valley. And it's wonderful to live in a community where people step up and organize these kinds of efforts to help residents in neighboring towns. As you know, week before last, Molly Ettanborough and I received an invitation from Governor Jerry Brown to attend the Global Climate Action Summit. I can't even begin to describe what a wonderful experience this was for the city to be able to be at this event. There were mayors and city leaders and prime ministers and advocates and scientists and panels and workshops held throughout the city as well as at the conference site throughout the course of this given week. We've learned a lot. We networked a lot. And it was just wonderful to be part of this initiative that the general message was each of us, despite our president pulling us out of the Paris Accord, that we will surpass our level that was established there because of the kind of work that Michael Bloomberg and Jerry Brown and many, many others are doing to support initiatives all across the globe. And that's really the, the message that was happening is everyone making commitments on what they're doing and they're part of the world to impact the effect of global change, climate change. Some specific updates from DPS. Malcolm Hoyt Drive, I know the business park has been waiting patiently for this project to move forward. It's at final design. It's being reviewed and cost estimate and specs are working up. Our target date is spring of 2019. Phillips Drive, I am very happy to report that we camered the system and located a drain line that can now be added to a new storm, a new storm drain that will help with the drainage on the hill section. They're also beginning to work with one of the residents at 25 Phillips Drive to start working on a drainage system that they need there. working on a drainage system that they need there. They also will be doing additional work on the site over in -- starting in the next two weeks, and I'll have additional updates for you at that point. The drainage project at Colton and Mo Street will start in two weeks. I know that you have a correspondence from East Boylston. I have been in touch with them also. They were concerned about where their project was in the line, in the queue, if you will, and whether or not the money was still there. The $60,000 that you appropriated for the drainage bond is still intact, and that we anticipate that project to go forward this spring also. Updates on road projects, Dove Street and Rush are at 99% completion. We are reviewing costs and limits of work to complete a portion of Ferry Road at Erie because that's in pretty bad shape, and we'd like to get some work done there before the winter. And we're also looking at sections of High Street. We are going to start doing that in phases over the next several years in conjunction with the Safe Roots to School project. So they're evaluating that, and we hope to do some work on that in the spring of 2019. The trees have been ordered for the Aubrey Wall on Francis Street to help create that buffer between I-95 and what those residents have asked for. So they'll be delivered. Installation is expected to start next week. Hale Street Fencing, another project that's been in the works for a while, will start in two weeks. Water quality. Many residents received the mandated flyer we were supposed to send out because of that one elevated site on Plum Island with the TTHM. We have had probably under 50 residents have reached out to either our office or the water plant or DPS. Again, as I had mentioned before, it's at Blue, and it's because it's a closed system out there, and that's why if you go past the clam flat, you'll see a bleeder that runs 24/7 to try and keep the water moving in terms of addressing this issue. There'll be a little -- at the Water and Sewer Commission this week, we're going to put up a little more clarifying information because the flyer was not as clarifying intended to scare people as opposed to letting them know that there really wasn't a real emergency here. And the next round of testing will be the first week in November. We start hydrant flushing again. This is really important for our water quality. It will begin in the West End on September 26th. A announcement is attached to your update and will also be posted on the city website, and that will continue running in the West End, and then that will be during the day, and then move to evening flushing as it moves across the city. Quick update on personnel. We've made offers of employment for a new chief of staff for my office, the Assistant Treasurer Collector and Procurement Officer, which was formerly referred to as the Assistant Auditor. And DPS is finalizing the job description for our new stormwater engineer, and we hope to get that posted in the next several weeks. There's been a lot of press about the CSO, the Combined Sewer Water activations that are happening. I had sent you a PowerPoint that was presented by DEP to the mayors and managers at Merrimack Valley Planning Commission back in late April, early May. We've asked that the Merrimack River Watershed Council come and speak to us at our next meeting in October. We'd like to hear about their data. I've also been in touch with members of GOMI, the Gulf of Maine Institute. I've been working with our students. They did a project where they were testing the water at our labs and then posting information about the results of the lab and the water condition. I'd like to see them get back to start doing that again, so we'll be looking at that also. I will certainly relay information to you about what the Watershed Council has to say. And we also need the legislature to move forward on notification, but we certainly need a lot more than just notification of this coming down the river. More on that coming. The MVP in resiliency, again, thank you for the allocation you gave for us to complete our plan. It is in final draft form and being reviewed, and we'll receive a copy of that shortly. Also wanted to let you know that the Friends of Newbury Port Trees installed a really beautiful sculpture on the rail trail. If you go down Washington Street away from downtown, you'll see it on the right-hand side. And recognized with the leaves on the sculpture, the people have made donations to trees in our city. It's quite beautiful, and would like to recognize Ryan Kelly, the artist who did this. And then speaking of trees, I cannot leave this topic without asking the council. We are a green community, and you are killing forests with the packets that keep coming out every week. I will buy all of you laptops. We have to stop this amount of paper. It has to stop. Please let me know what you want for laptops and software, and we will move forward on this. But we cannot continue to copy the kinds of paper and waste that you have been contributing to killing forests. So I said it. And finally, what?
It's not on two sides.
I can send it to you electronically if you had your laptops.
You're going to say touche on that one.
Yes. But they're short. They're not -- we can all do better. Let's put it that way, okay?
I'm printing the mayor's update.
We just said that one. I can send it electronically to you if you had your laptops here. Anyway, again, you know how I feel about the Custom House Maritime Museum. I brought this back to you. It meets all the criteria of historic preservation. It was unanimously supported by the CPC Committee. You've heard members of the board, people who care about this building. It is so significant to our city. I understand your position, but I believe the RFP process and those of us who are sitting on that committee to review that is a much better vehicle to push back on what's happening with the NRA. We have to protect one of the most significant historical buildings in our city and the roof and all of the priceless artifacts that are in that building. So I would ask you, please, to move forward and support the funding for the roof. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Z.
So I have a couple of quick questions. One is on the procurement officer. Last week when we voted on a redo on the DPS contract, we actually talked about procurement a little bit because there was a stipend in there, and Finance Director Manning indicated that we were moving more towards a decentralized procurement situation, and that was actually part of my reasoning for voting for it. But now we're going to have a citywide. Maybe it would be helpful if you could send us like the job description or what you -- because you mentioned it's changing from another position to this.
Well, there's --
I think it would be helpful to understand what, you know, before budget next year, just what the position is and the expectations are for it.
Well, we can do that long before the budget process, Counselor, but I think that's a very fair question. We actually, I was surprised none years ago, we didn't have a procurement officer. We actually had to borrow one from a neighboring community to be sure we were meeting. So we began because planning has different level of procurement in contracts that they put out. DPS has a very different level. So someone needs to oversee that whole process, so that's why we're bringing in a procurement officer who will essentially ensure that we are in full compliance. We have tried sending my chief of staff in the past to go for procurement training, but obviously those positions are being snatched up, and they don't stay very long, so it's not really a good way to have a procurement officer in the city. But I certainly will send you the job description.
Yeah, any information.
Sure, absolutely.
The concept is always good, but there's some in the -- there was some in the chief administrative officer. There was a stipend there, too.
That's gone away.
So just anyways. So my second question is about the custom house. I know folks are here to hear about it. I don't know what your position is on the NRA and what they're doing, but my question for you is what is it you think we should do as a city council if we're not happy? Just go and lobby the NRA until they somehow bend them to our will or something? I mean, we've done a lot of steps. We had a two-year ad hoc committee. We worked pretty hard on that. We got a unanimous vote on the council. With all due respect, we rejected twice nominations for reappointments to the NRA, so we kind of made our point known there. I've been at almost every NRA meeting for the last couple of years, speaking my piece. So I'd like to clear the logjam, and you were former city councillor, so tell me what I should do so that we can get this thing cleaned up for these folks and move along with it. And just for the record, I don't support the NRA's transfer.
I know you can.
For reasons we could debate on the time, but I'd like to pose that to you if you wouldn't mind.
I believe you should look at this in isolation of that process, because regardless of whether it ultimately ends up in the city owning it and a long-term lease to the custom house, which, you know, is, I know, the preferred by many of the councillors, a preferred position by many of the councillors in the room, I have changed position based on consensus. I thought that we should have had some of the land that was divvied up by the Waterfront Trust, but listening to the people in the room, that we had in our working group and the public, I have changed positions, and that's my job, is to work on finding common ground in consensus. I know that there is opposing views at this point, but regardless of who owns the property, whether the custom house ultimately owns it, the NRA, but ultimately they're going away, or the city, the roof needs to be fixed. And I'm also concerned about timeline, and I'm glad you asked me this question because if I am presented with your vote of the CPC, which includes all of the projects, it includes your 5-5 vote. That means it's a negative. And if I sign that order, then I approve your vote. So I'm concerned about process, and I've called legal again on that because I don't know -- I can't pull out that vote from your total vote, but we're also going to run up into a clock in terms of 10 days, in terms of when I can sign that or not. I don't think you want me to reject all of your vetting of all the other CPC votes, but I don't know how I can do that because it's a total. You know what I'm saying? And I have only 10 days once it's presented to me to either approve or veto it, and I don't want to veto all of your other votes on the CPC issues.
Counselor Janta.
If my memory serves me correctly, before I was on the council, I know that Counselor Tom Jones and Counselor Ives at the time sort of led an effort that rejected a couple of CPC funding issues, but that didn't hold up the rest of them from being funded. They just weren't funded. They were rejected by the council, and then the rest moved along.
I understand that, but --
I don't see any difference in that.
The mayor at the time accepted that, the fact that the council rejected that. I'm not supporting the fact that you're not approving the roof for the Custom House Maritime Museum.
No, I didn't vote either way on that.
I know.
Are you saying you would reject all of the funding in lieu of one of them?
I -- because it's all in one order, there's a problem because it's all in one order, and I'm trying to find out how I then approve. If I sign it, it means I approve the fact that you voted down the roof, and I don't approve that. So how can I pull out one piece of it with all the others? So it's a different situation. Granted, yes, there have been times in the past where the council has rejected a particular vote, but the mayor has signed the order and has been okay with that.
Okay.
So it's a little different.
I understand.
Yeah, no, I think you're mistaken. As the chair of the council, I mean, of the committee can tell you, we took separate votes on each of the items. We did that deliberately. It's on the videotape, so I think you're mistaken. But also, I'm trying to understand, so you're saying that if you don't sign it within 10 days, they're all rejected, but we voted on it in August, so it was presented to you in August.
No, it wasn't. It hasn't been presented to me yet.
Hasn't been presented to you. It's being held by?
No, it's not held. It's just it takes time to put all these orders together, get the signatures. The sponsoring person signs it first. This is very typical. You never -- it's always weeks and weeks after.
So when does the 10 days start?
When I am presented with the document, I have --
By whom?
By the city clerk. I haven't been presented with it yet.
Well, I guess I'd urge you to go back to the videotape. We were very careful to examine each item separately and vote on it.
No, I understand that, but they're not -- they're all rolled into one order, even though there are separate votes. You decided to vote on each of the items in the order separately. They're all in one order, though, Counselor.
Counselor, I might clarify a little bit, too, because I asked some similar questions this afternoon, and the mayor and I spoke briefly about this, and I know that she is looking for a way legally to subdivide them so that some can move forward and maybe the other is still left hanging. I don't think the mayor's had an opportunity yet to get guidance from counsel on that.
We've had our initial conversation this afternoon.
No, I'm sorry, but again, in our procedure, the only thing that we have before us right now on the table tonight is a new order.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't solve this problem anyway. So I'm very puzzled by this, and it's not -- I don't believe it's consistent with what's gone in the past, but that's okay. It's a we're in a question and answer period. We'll have an opportunity when it comes off the table to debate.
Correct. Counselor Z.
I just have one final question. Would you consider submitting to us new appointments for the two holdover NRA spots that would vote no on transferring the land, and that would clear the way for us to do the roof?
I'm not sure that that makes sense at this point, given the level of work that's been completed to date, and I'm not sure that that's where people, the majority would fall anyway.
That's fine, just a question. I mean, I asked the last, but you weren't present, so I wanted to ask you directly.
I heard it on TV. I heard you ask.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Questions from counselors or comments? Counselor J.
This one, Mark. This thing is positive. Just curious about an update on the Hale Street fence. It says the work will start in two weeks, and have all the loose ends kind of been tied up on that?
They have been to that neighbor's house. I can't tell you how many times they have called him, and there's been no response. And I went, too, and he was supposed to come up with some other things he would be satisfied with, and we just didn't get there, Larry. So we can talk offline about it, but we'll put bushes or something in front of his property so that we can --
Yeah.
We'll work out something in terms of that he'll be satisfied with, but it's a reasonable question.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Rather extensive introduction for tonight's meeting. Let's move on. I'm going to ask the clerk to walk us through the consent agenda, please.
The consent agenda consists this evening of the approval of a minute for September 10th. There are no transfers. There are three communications. Communication 86 is a letter from the residents of East Boylston Street. That would go to public safety. Communication 87, which is a letter regarding Coffin Street, that would go to public safety. Communication 88 is the wave guard application that would go to public utilities. There are first reading of the following appointments. First one is to refer to planning and development is Don Walters, 15 Smith Street, the CPC and the planning board until 10/1/2021. Following first reading of the 87s. The next is to Human Rights Commission, Jennifer Grosskim, 11 Myrtle Ave., until 3/31/2019. The following is to the Parks Commission, Matt Ellsworth, 38 Plummer Avenue, the Parks Commission, Atkinson, 5/1/2020. Charles Griffin, 3 Vernon Street, Parks Commission, Bartlett-Mell, 5/1/2019. Ann Legasi, 1 Piper's Quarry, Parks Commission, 5/1/2022. Karen Popkin, 49 Boardman Street, Parks Commission, until 5/1/2021. Kim Turner, 27 High Street, to the Parks Commission, until 5/1/2023. That's the consent agenda for this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. We don't stand.
What shall we do with the mayor's update? Is there a motion?
Receiving file.
Moved and seconded. Receiving file. Discussion.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Communications.
First communication comes with an emergency preamble. It is for a block party to be held on the 29th of September. A preamble is authored by Counselor Connell. It's again because it's time-sensitive due to the date of the event being prior to the next council meeting, October 9th. That's the emergency preamble.
What is the will of the council regarding the -- well, we have to take them separately. Let's take care of Communication 84 first, the block party on Central Place.
Emergency preamble first.
Emergency preamble on it? Okay. You can take them separately.
Yeah.
You can take them separately.
I think that needs to be first.
All right. Do we have a motion on the emergency preamble related to the block party?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second discussion.
Hearing none.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.
And now in the substance of the block party application, Communication 84.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Actually, I got a call from Russ Edelman. I think the day that he tried to sign this, let's submit this, and he realized that he had missed the date. Central Place is a small street off of State Street. They notified all the butter, everybody on the street. They've invited everybody on the street. Nobody has an opposition to it on the street. Russ was actually going to come tonight, but right before, after I was leaving licensing and permits, he gave me a call, and his wife had to run out, and they have a four-and-a-half year old, so he had to stay home with her. But I ran through -- But I ran through everything that I would have run through with him on, if it had come to public safety, I would not have made him come in, you know, based on my conversation with him. So I would assume, not to put in words in the mouth of my fellow counselors at the committee, but that we probably would have approved this.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor approve the block party application. Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Con, I didn't see your hand.
Oh, no, it's okay. I just, thank you, Mr. President. I just had a comment just about the rain date of October 6th, and it's on Pond Street, so that is Bartlet Mall day. So just in case there is, I'm wondering, do you want to add something in there for them to have a more flexible rain date?
They're on the other side, actually. It's a dead end on State Street. He lives on Pond Street, but it's a dead, Central Place is a dead end from just beyond the mobile, the right, and it dead ends.
That jogs my memory.
If you could go, you'd run right into the CVS.
Is that satisfactory, Counselor?
Well, yeah, if I have one here that thinks that's it, yes.
Further discussion.
Hearing none. All those in favor on the block party application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is done.
Now, we have another matter, and that is the emergency preamble for the Fall Harvest Before we take this up, I want to say that it is my intention to sit down with the chamber, the director certainly, and perhaps the board, and discuss with them their schedule for activities. Obviously, we got backed up on the Bear Naked Ladies concert. It sent a lot of people scurrying in a lot of directions. And here we have again, an application from the chamber that does not meet our requirement for timely submission. I want to emphasize to the chamber, the need to plan far enough in advance and submit to us in advance their schedule for the year. It would make things so much easier. Having said that, is there a motion on the emergency preamble for the Fall Harvest Festival?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I hear one no. The matter prevails. The Communication 85, the Fall Harvest Festival, the application itself related to the emergency preamble, is there a motion from the floor? Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Counselor Z.
I just have one comment on the certificate that came in today, which I believe is associated with this. So when you have that conversation, what I don't like is when it says like, you know, you're an additional insured, but only to the extent that another document, which isn't provided, may have terms and conditions on it. And I know I harp on these every two weeks, but I've kind of accepted it as my job. So, you know, if we see fit to approve it, I think we may be asked to have that stricken. We're just an additional insured with no other conditions. Because I've tried to look it up. CG 2026 is a fairly standard, but it's just a blank form. So until you see what they actually filled in as to what the extent provided is, you don't know.
So are you moving?
Yeah, I'd like to move to if with the approval that we just state that a condition of that approval is the city of Newburyport is an additional insured with no.
Additional approval based on that.
Yeah, with no further strings attached.
Moving second. Although, so is that a friendly amendment to the sponsor? Oh, sponsor?
Yes, I accept the friendly amendment. Sorry.
So we have an amended motion to approve. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. And the clerk will communicate to the chamber the question of amendment before the permit is issued, right?
True. We will ask that that be stricken after the words insured all the way through Philadelphia Insurance Company Form CG 2026, whatever that may be.
Thank you. Yep. That's it for communications. We have an appointment.
We have an appointment that is Appointment 50. Michael Felitti, who is from Four Caitlin Circle Salisbury, to join the police department as a patrolman. Would you like me to take the roll call first, Mr. President?
Yes, please. And then I'm going to ask the marshal to say a few words.
This is to approve the second reading for the appointment number 50. Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor President?
Yes.
So a roll call traditionally done on the second reading has been done and approved.
Thank you. Congratulations. Marshal, would you like to introduce your new officer to us?
Sure. Thank you for allowing me a few moments here. This is Michael Felitti. He joined us in 2015 as a part-time dispatcher. I was able to get him on the reserve list. He just graduated the police academy on Friday, six months.
Congratulations.
So it's a pleasure to have him for our department. He's going to be a great asset to the department and to the city. So.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the approval. I grew up in the city of Newburyport, so it's a great honor to serve on this department under Marshal Murray, and I'm very excited to join the force.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Marshal. Where are we now? Orders. Let's go.
First order is the order that was tabled with respect to the Custom House slate roof before the body at the present moment.
All right. Let me explain to the members the progress that has not been made and the progress that will be made. We do not have a second opinion on the appropriateness of taking up this matter again. We will by our next meeting. Here's the process that I would suggest. I have the names of two attorneys, municipal attorneys who practice generally in the area. The clerk is researching others based on the vast resources at his disposal. And what I would prefer to do is to just kind of do a paper review, then give all the counselors an opportunity to interview as many as three, if there are three potential strong candidates. Some evening, I'm going to guess it'll be about 10 days out. And on the basis of those interviews, allow you to select the person you would like to represent us. That's the process that I would like to use for this, if that meets with your approval. Any questions about it? Counselor Z.
Well, I just want to thank the council president for his efforts on this. My suggestion, insofar as the process goes, is, you know, I think this is one of the reasons that we should take that money that we have in the budget and pick a council to stick with us for the year, for example. So that way, we don't have to replicate this process because it will certainly regenerate over and over again, just as the city has one city solicitor. I think it would be nice to follow that same process to identify one party and agree upon it as a body, and then use them throughout the course of the year. It's just my suggestion. But thank you.
The suggestion is welcome, and it's actually my intention that this be the person who does represent us for the coming year. We can always change horses if we change our minds based on our experience with someone. But if I wasn't clear, I didn't mean just for this particular item.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But this is our council for the coming year. Counselor Devlin, you had your hand up.
I'm just wondering, in the next two weeks, if we're going to be able to have all of us interview three different candidates. And, you know, where we want somebody to do, and it's not fair for them, they're not billing those hours, it's not fair for us to do it for them just as one project, which is, you know, so perhaps we could get them to do the one project to move this along and then push off the interviewing. I mean, this will be a test run for someone that we're interested in, but we could leave it in the council, the council president's probably able hands. That's, I think it's fair that you've come to us and asked us for names. You know, that's our participation. I think if we take it to the next step, we're never going to have that opinion by the next meeting.
Well, what do other counselors think? I mean, I would prefer to hear from you. You may have different perspectives than I do on someone's qualifications and their ability to fairly represent us. Counselor Agaman.
Well, I think you can just do that by email, Mr. President. You can just email the names and say, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace. I think counsel large is a good point where, you know, let's, we don't need to interview them all ourselves, but just let us know who you have in mind and give us a chance. And if you snooze, you lose. If we don't comment, well, that's tough luck for us.
Is that a term of art in the legal profession? You snooze, you lose?
Yes, it's called sleeping on your rights.
Counselor Z.
Yeah, I'm fine with it for the one-off, but I think your process of interviewing makes great sense for the longer term hire. So I appreciate that two weeks is probably short notice, but so that's, if that helps clarify, if we're separating the two, then sure.
I don't want to jam this into anyone's throat. I'd just like to get some advice. Other people want to speak on this? Well, it would make it a lot easier to just go ahead and select someone for this immediate purpose and then do the evaluation longer, you know, over a period of time past that. But I want to make sure that we're all, or at least a substantial majority, was comfortable with that process and with the individual that I select, if that's the case. All right. Thank you, Counselor Z again.
If it aids you in any way, and I'm permitted to, I would be happy to make a motion to lay with the city council president the decision to hire an attorney to render a decision on this. We could take a vote if that would help you. I'm just offering to formalize it than just saying sort of straw poll. So I'd make that motion. In this instance, we move along, so that's my motion.
Further discussion on this matter. Counselor Tanta.
Just perhaps a friendly amendment that the council president will forward to all counselors the names of the individuals, as well as their CVs or resumes, or whatever lawyers.
That'd be it. Friendly. Yep, absolutely. Certainly. That'll make it go a little faster. Yep. All those in favor of that proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll proceed with it. And the clerk is going.
We still need to take it off the table and do some.
Yeah, point of order. So.
Motion to take off the table. Second. Discussion on removing this from the table.
We're not allowed to debate putting it back on the table. So just really quickly, you know, we had a lot of testimony tonight. I just want to make one thing clear, you know, because I was quoted in the paper. It's not just about the ownership of the property. Remember where we started on this. We, there's the anti-aid amendment. So you guys all know it, have been through this before, but for the people who are watching on TV, and for many members of the Custom House Maritime Museum who got the blast on Friday to come, I got one of them too. I'm a member, I give money. I just went to a fundraiser at, you know, significant cost. The anti-aid amendment says, no grant, appropriation, or use of public money or property or loan of credit shall be made or authorized by the Commonwealth or any political subdivision thereof for the purpose of founding, maintaining, or aiding any infirmary, hospital, institution, primary, secondary school, or charitable religious undertaking which is not publicly owned and under the exclusive control, order, and supervision of public officers or public agents authorized by the Commonwealth or federal authority or both. The language of the amendment is clear and peremptory. That's the statement of the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court. So obviously, we have the CPA. You think, well, how do we do the CPA? And the answer is because the court has come up with workarounds, because there are charities that do things that give a public benefit. Very simply, I won't get into the full argument that I've emailed around to people in Ward Two after the newspaper article, but we don't have what we got from the churches on this. Mike De Sette was under the impression that we had a deed restriction that benefits the city of Newburyport and prevents changes to the custom house. That is not correct. In 2003, there was a lease provision put in between the NRA and the custom house, which said, if you make changes to the building, you have to check with the historical commission in Newburyport. That is a lease provision. It's not clear whether it can be enforced directly by us, first of all. But when the project is sold, there will be no lease. The lease will terminate by operation of law. We have nothing. So for example, when we gave money under the CPA to a steeple, we got a deed restriction. Repeat, there is no deed restriction presently held by the city. There is a deed restriction held by the state, but the city has nothing. The city got a grant, Mayor Byron Matthews in 1971, for about $580,000. The city was the applicant from HUD. Neither the Maritime Society nor the NRA was even eligible to apply for that. The city took that money, gave it to restoration. The Maritime Society, God love them, they raised the balance. So that's in today's dollars, $580,000. According to my records, we've already given them $300,000 of Community Preservation Act money. I'm perfectly happy to support giving them $100,000 more if I know that we have some modicum of protection for this building, which has been in public ownership for 50 years. So I regret, just as people said when they testified that they are disappointed, I regret that the facts and the law have not been presented honestly. They have not been presented honestly to the membership. All we're asking is, just as we get protection when we give money to a church, if we've put in hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars into a building, we expect to get something for the taxpayers in return. And it is changing. It is a public building now. Very soon, it will be entirely private. They have the ability to sell the property, they have the ability to mortgage the property. And a mortgagee, when they foreclose, will extinguish any restrictions. Otherwise, not going to give a loan. It's not worth anything. Finally, the building is assessed, just the building, less than $600,000. In other words, the city has put in more money than the building is worth, and we're being offered nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I've given Counselor Agaman some latitude here, but the motion is to remove this from the table. And then the intention is to recommit this to the table. Let's limit our discussion, please. All those in favor of removing this from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a further motion?
Motion to put it back on the table.
Second. Motion is to put this back on the table. All those in favor of recommitting this, putting this back on the table, not committing it, I'm sorry, putting this back on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no.
One no.
Thank you, Counselor. Who was the second on that?
I was.
Thank you. Ordinance 61. I'm sorry, Order 61.
Order 61 reads as follows. City accepts emergency management planning grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the amount of $3,220, and accepts with gratitude a gift from Strom Chemicals in the amount of $5,376.96. Said funds are accepted in accordance with Chapter 4453A for the purpose of purchasing six sets of tactical gear to be used by the fire department medical personnel submitted Counselor Tantar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.[1662.02] Second. Moved to the second, removed to Senate Budget and Finance. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Order 62. 62. "And the City Council accepts with gratitude a gift from the high school class of 2018 in the amount of $500 to be used for the creation of an outdoor teaching space at the high school, and appropriate said funds to the Gaden Marl Outdoor Seating Project, accordance with 4453A. Submitted Counselor Tontar."
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second. Moved in second, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's move to ordinances. This will be the second reading of Ordinance 17. It's an ordinance to forbid use variances. I don't think I need to read it. It's submitted by Counselor Agaman.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. Moved in second, discussion. Counselor Devlin, is that?
Nope.
Sorry. Dr. Yersigal, go ahead. Hearing none. All those in favor on second reading, it'll be a roll call vote. Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earl.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
And I want to thank the committee on Planning and Development, and the members of the Zoning Advisory Committee for the work that they've put into this. At this point, we're going to have a discussion of zoning amendments related to marijuana retail sales. I know that one member wants to be recused, and needs to recuse himself, and that's Counselor Devlin.
Counselor President, thank you.
And we're going to begin this with a slide presentation from the Planning Director that kind of brings us up to where we are right now, how we got here, and what our options may be moving forward.
So, if you're looking forward on the project planning, I'm just going to have a few brief slides to summarize from every section of the zoning of marijuana related uses and things we're looking for. So I understand the Capitol time, if you're making a vote for marijuana retail sales, it's all over the background. I'd be able to vote for Cal Vogels' proposal. The status of zoning right now in Newburyport, cultivation and retail sales is the two big categories for marijuana uses. There are other subcategories that the state considers research and development, but those are not done frequently and are not, I think, of the primary concern. Cultivation, which is the manufacturing of marijuana, is permitted right now by recent order of the City Council by special permit in the business park, and it's subject to certain restrictions. We'll vote for this evening. I'm also here to answer any questions you may have. Retail sales, you set it as a separate category. It has a temporary moratorium until the early start of the three items here, December 31st of this year, so the end of the calendar year. Certification of votes on a valid referendum. There has been no such referendum so far. Or final adoption of zoning that would be applicable for the retail sales. So, the council taking a vote. This is a zoning map of the city. What I've done is labeled on the top of it a couple of things. I will go through all the color codings of our zoning map of the city, but the zoning map indicates where uses are allowed in the city. The four areas I've labeled here, the greenish highlighted here, that's the business park, and those are the two purplish areas right here. So I will be showing a little globe of each of these areas in a few moments, but that is the business park that we consider to be referred as the industrial park. That is the whole area right there. So that is where cultivation is allowed through already through vote in the City Council. Retail sales, however, there are really only, from a land use perspective, only three areas of the city that are already designated for retail sales. So that's the Route 1 traffic circle down here, Story Avenue up here, 595, and the downtown, which is consists of two districts, the B2 and the B3. So that's the reddish areas that we see right there. Where cultivation was allowed, like I said, is the business park, that's right here. And the options for retail sales, like I said, that they're considering are these three. And I'll just kind of give a, just a highlight here. We had an exchange with legal counsel some months back, this is in May 14th. They gave us a memo which was distributed both to the City Council, particularly the Planning Development Committee and the Plating Board, during a hearing process where the City Council was considering at the time both the retail sales and the cultivation. And council pointed out for us, and I was asked to clarify here, that under the current zoning, although there isn't established case law this yet, my feeling, and I think legal counsel's opinion, as you can see here, is that under the current zoning ordinance, if the council takes no action, that one could argue that retail sales of marijuana would be allowed in all of the retail sales districts that I pointed on the map there. So essentially, by right now, there is, of course, case law, that, you know, we have to have established in Massachusetts for this, but in essence, our understanding with legal counsel is that if the council does nothing, because of the broad definition of retail sales that we have in our zoning ordinance, and the application of the state statute, and all the amendments that have been done to it, that effectively, retail sales would be allowed in any of those three districts if the council has a vote into some nature. This is the business park, and I know that that may be not the substance of what the council is discussing this evening, but I think it's good for context, especially since a lot of the provisions that have to do with marijuana retail sales or cultivation are in one ordinance, it's already been adopted by the council. So there's a lot of provisions in there about special permit from the Plating Board, the requirement for applications, parking requirements, submission requirements for group application, et cetera. Those also apply to these uses for retail sales. Marijuana cultivation is allowed in the business park, which is down here. This is the town line. That's the Route 1 traffic circle right there, that's State Street. This is Route 1. That's the Low Street. And so what you're seeing on this map here is codified in the text of the ordinance, and illustrated here on the map, there's a couple of buffers. One unknown is the buffer to residential districts. So in the business parks specifically, there's a buffer to up 250 feet to residential properties or districts, and that's founded right here. So you can see that's offset from Route 1 here, State Street here, and Low Street here. The other buffer that we're seeing here is, these red dots are illustrated as protected uses, the so-called protected uses, which I'll get to in a moment, but schools, churches, parks, places where children would congregate generally, are considered protected uses under the ordinance. Excuse me. So, there's a 500-foot buffer from those. So what you're seeing here is that is the 500-foot buffer around those protected uses, Marlon Mall right here, for instance. So that is the gap around the city, that buffer just being shown for the business park, but that buffer would also apply to retail sales elsewhere in the city.
With the exception of residential.
Correct, correct, because I'll get to it in a little bit, as I was going into other areas. So, thank you, Counselor Vogel for the point. In the Story Avenue area, where this is a business one district, or B1 district, right now, there is a little restriction, or buffer to residential in the ordinance. So right now, that buffer, as Counselor Vogel pointed out, is only within the business park. So if the council wishes to establish buffers for retail sales or retail sales districts, we would need to do so separately from what is in the ordinance already. This is just a globe, an air photograph of the retail district in Story Avenue. So what you see is Market Basket and that plaza right here. This is the Indian Old Shaws. Sorry, the old shaws right there. This is the old King Bar, a little strip mall right there. Woodman Way is right here, and this is Low Street. So all of this pinkish color right here, although this is obviously a residential now, it has historically been updated on maps to designate this as residential, which we are in the process of doing. So, if you could for a moment, just ignore the fact that that is already residential, but this effectively, it really ends up being the area of retail that we're discussing as a possibility. The retail district around the Route 1 traffic circle, that is this pink shaded, a little bit harder to see in here, but a little pink shaded area right here. And the buffer, the one buffer that's applicable there, as Counselor Vogel pointed out, there is no buffer to residential here yet, but the one buffer that I'm showing is 500 feet is from a daycare that is one of the so-called protected uses. So there's a 500-foot buffer to that. And within that buffer, although this is the district that you might be contemplating, this buffer, under the ordinance right now, would restrict any such uses for retail sales being in that buffer. This is the downtown. It's a little bit harder and less legible to read because there's a lot of things going on in this area. But I'll just point out for you, it's a little hard to make out, I'm sure for some of you, but this pinkish area right here, I'm trying to do it in transparency, that's our business district right there. There are some other pieces that are not contiguous with that business district, and that is right here, just off of Cary Ave, which is the ramp of Route 1. There's a business area right there. And there's also a business area right here, which is the tannery. So, that is essentially our business district for the downtown. It consists of both the B2 and the B3 districts. And what you're seeing on here is some buffers. There is no residential buffer right now. So what you're actually seeing here is this purplish line, which I tried to emphasize a little deeper, is these are the buffers from those so-called protected uses. So what you'll see here is, there's a daycare over here in the CVS facility, the part of the map, being a park, the waterfront park there, In Street being a park around there, and so the school, the water story school over here. So there's protected uses, and so this purplish buffer right here illustrates that the majority of the downtown, with just those protected uses, as they're codified in the ordinance right now, would be effectively eliminated by those buffers. The only areas that really would be left over would be this area right here, you can see the waterfront west, a little core of that, and the tannery right here, which is largely outside of that buffer there. And I should say, and the piece on the right, Cary Ave. So, the default buffer zones that the state establishes, and this is, again, just good context, is distincting under its own regulations established by the Campus Control Commission, or CCC, has a 500-foot buffer to, and this is the limit of what is buffered in state regulations, pre-existing public or private schools providing education in kindergarten or any of grades one through 12. So, there's a little bit of caveat there that a community can also reduce that buffer, but I'll add a note here. One is that the protected uses are somewhat limited, so they're only, really, these schools. And, two, there's no buffer to residential that the state or the CCC has established. In new report specifically, so the ordinances are on the book today, most specifically the one that was recently, relatively recently adopted by the council for cultivation, there is a buffer, but as Counselor Vogel pointed out, it's only for the business park. In the I-1 and I-1B districts, and I can go back to those maps, the company, there's a 250-foot buffer to residential districts. So I've shown that out there, but as you noted, I did not show the 250-foot buffer in the other districts, the downtown, Story Avenue, or the one. Protected uses are similar to what the state has, and that's the blue text you see here, but the council adopted some other protected uses in that. And so, there's a 500-foot buffer, same as the state, but it also includes nurseries and daycare facilities, public library, parks. Basically, it goes on, but basically, any place where children might congregate is captured in this. Unless otherwise amended, of course, by the council. So, this is the new report zoning map again. Like I pointed out, the business park has already been established for cultivation, so I'm not sure that that's the way it's planned this evening, but there is discussion, obviously, of retail sales in the amendment, at least the most recent amendment that was submitted to the council, contrapes three areas, the B1 district, the downtown, which is B2 and B3, and then again, the B1 district that's around the traffic circle. I'm here to answer any of the questions you may have, and this is the council, but I will.
Don't say worry, thank you. Questions from counselors? I think there are going to be many. Let me start. Counselor Earls, do you want to go first?
Sure, just go through it one more time, in general terms. As you interpret it right now, if the council did nothing from this moment forward, the downtown would be pretty much eliminated, except for the tannery, the Perry, and a little slip next to Route 1. The traffic circle would be fairly much eliminated because of the daycare, preschools there, okay? But Story Ave, there isn't many setbacks. That's pretty much wide open.
There are no known protected, so-called protected uses that would be included.
Okay, I just want to be sure I had that clear. Thank you. Counselor Zied?
On that same track, back to the KP Law opinion from May, may be possible. In your professional opinion, do you mean to imply that somebody could just come in with an application, it would be up to the city to litigate with them to prevent it, or the other way around, that they would need to litigate with the city in order to allow it in the first place?
I think it would more likely be the second, were there, if you will, a little battle. But, that being said, I think that there's enough. Unfortunately, the state much liked it, left it very convoluted, the way that marijuana uses are a lot of the laws across the Commonwealth.
That's for sure.
As long as there are regulations essentially. So, it's not, it's pretty unfortunate that it be, but I do think that they would be the ones really putting that open door against municipality. But, that being said, given that either court passed, like you said, with the original ballot question, that we have not had a valid referendum to prohibit uses, and given that there's a temporary moratorium that will be expiring, and we have done a fair amount of scrutiny internally, you know, city questions about, maybe we'll allow these uses during the study phase, if you will, I think that we would be in the defensive position at that point, although they would have to, you know, fight that battle. We would be in a better position, and we would be able to prohibit them, given that we have the opportunity to adopt zoning for retail sales, and it's a, as the default line, as the Marijuana ordinance today, retail is broadened up to encompass retail sales of marijuana, you know, unless it's another amendment.
So, are you implying that our retail definition is more broad than other communities, perhaps, or this is a common theme throughout?
No, I think this is a, I think the definition is pretty common, compared to other communities. The issue is that marijuana was not previously legal use, so we would never have contemplated, you know, redefining it as a separate category. We did, in the last year, define it as a separate category, but the council has, in the amendment that's already been adopted, actually, prohibited the retail sales throughout the city, but that is tied to the moratorium until December 31st. So I think what would happen at that point is, the prohibition across the city in the retail districts of marijuana would be put up against the fact that our definition of retail sales is somewhat broad for typical retail sales, and therefore could encompass retail sales of marijuana. And that conflict would probably be pointed out by someone trying to do retail sales, saying, "New report passed the ballot question, it has to go to a valid referendum or prohibit retail sales. The current prohibition has expired, you know, this is reaching December 31st, the moratorium expired, and there's no other replacement zoning." The argument on their end, as the applicant or the proponent of retail sales, would be, "You would have the opportunity to establish something, the prohibition is in place right now, but only until December 31st, and it can no longer continue to prohibit the retail sales of marijuana, given it is not immediately replaced with something to the prior request, or to prohibit outright, to be in doubt."
Thank you. Counselor Junta?
Park Circle, or known as Kelleher Way, has a park in it. Is that, have you put a buffer zone around that?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't, let me just go up to the Story Avenue. So, it's a little bit hard to make out in here.
Yeah, that's Keller.
So, yes, I guess it's a question of, would we consider it to be a park? If that were the case, if we were concerned that to be a park, it would be a raise here, which I haven't shown, but that would basically cut off a portion of the Market Basket Plaza, but you'd still see the majority of this remaining as an area.
But are you debating that it's not a park?
No, I think we generally argue that that is a park.
It's a park.
Okay.
It's on the list, right?
The parks in the ordinance.
Well, it's state-owned, but children congregate there.
It may not be, it may go by the city, but it's brought up to be encompassed by the language of the ordinance.
And would you consider that children congregate at Children's Healthcare?
I would not myself, but again, reasonable legal lawyers and attorneys could argue that point, I'm sure, but I would not consider that to be qualified with the purposes of the ordinance.
I have, may I ask questions? Usually don't. No one, I'm sorry. President Connell. I made a mirror. Andy, how many, if we take no action, how many facilities, retail outlets, might be placed within our borders?
There is no cap right now on the ordinances, so there is no limit if the council doesn't place or define or narrow the confines.
I mean, market conditions, of course, are going to have a lot to do with that.
Market conditions, of course, yeah.
There are no limits. There could be
There are no limits on the number.
A half dozen.
Sure, although I don't think that would happen, and there certainly is no limit to it, just like any other retail establishment. We have not set a cap on the number of retail establishments in itself, you know.
Other questions from counselors? Counselor Tontar, there you are.
Sorry, a little bit, a little bit, getting a prick in my neck. So, under 94G, after January 1st, Chapter 94G is in Section 3, it outlines the city's powers, right? And then, under licensing, it outlines what a retailer has to do to get a license. And there, from my memory, it says that the, that the community they want to locate in, right, must indicate, right, that they do not meet, right, our current zoning, right? So, I'm kind of referring to the earlier discussion. So, if we haven't passed any more zoning, right, and the status quo exists, then the city could not indicate that we have restricted retail. Although, we could say that our interpretation
Yeah.
is, under our current zoning for retail, doesn't include marijuana.
Correct. We have, there's a distinction to be made here, and I think you referenced what this is going on. So, in the amendment, it was about the earliest year for marijuana uses, and this covered some of the language that covers marijuana cultivation, and some of it that covers retail sales. There is language in there that says it's prohibited, essentially, across the board throughout the city. And so that language is obviously what the city might be presenting first, saying, "This is the prohibition across the board." And there's also a section in the ordinance that says if the use is not explicitly allowed, it is prohibited in all the districts, et cetera. So, we would be relying in part on that language. My concern, and I will ask you as legal counsel of the city, but as a land use planner, I think that based on other case law that's relevant for land uses, I don't think it's beneficial for us to have a conflict where the ballot is passed, and the community is upping it under the state statute, overconfident it might be, to allow retail sales. And we have language in the ordinance that says we do not allow retail sales in the city, and that I think is a weak position for the city potentially to be in. So, I do not recommend us taking no action, despite the fact that, as you pointed out, there is language in there today saying, "This is a separate use from retail sales, and it's prohibited." But the reason I, for us to concern is because once that moratorium goes away, I think we're in a weaker position to defend and say that this is a separate use and is prohibited.
I'll let Counselor Tontar follow.
Just follow up. So, in that earlier section, which refers to the use table, it says it's prohibited, but there's the asterisk that references the moratorium.
Correct, correct.
So I guess when I read that, I question, does, if, you know, if the, when the moratorium is ended, does that end that reference?
It's a footnote, so I would say, no, the prohibition is still listed in there, but I think it's questionable as to how enforceable that restriction would be after the moratorium.
Counselor Zied?
I just wondered if, I think you drew this at one point, but in the Story Ave, if you put in a 200-foot residential buffer, do you have a sense for what that looks like?
Yeah, actually, and I
250, or something like?
Sure.
Just mirroring the one we did for the I-1.
250.
250 was, yeah. And I know you had, you've drawn a million different maps over the months, so.
Yeah.
I know I've seen it before, but I wondered if you had it with you.
Sorry. The, this is for our map, so I'll move it more dynamically, but I apologize for the, a little large, it's difficult to see. But, this is the same Story Ave, the business district, thank you. And this is the 250-foot buffer that were established. So what you'll see here is a good chunk of that district is taken out, and it's, it slivers of certain parcels, and then you run through the whole. But this is the area that would be left within there, if you had a 250-foot there, if you had a 250-foot parcel.
And then that building on the left that's in the, in the sort of the clear there, is that, what is that, that's Kmart, the former Kmart?
Uh, it goes to the middle of Kmart.
Yeah.
10, 10.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah.
The piece of that map that's not 100% correct is right behind where Planet Fitness is, those little white roofs you see, note down.
Yep.
Go, go the other side, no, up, those three white roofs?
Yes.
Those are residential houses.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the reason why I didn't highlight those is because those aren't residential districts, they're only residential uses, and the ordinance only refers to districts, so for that reason it's not covered.
Got it.
So those were done by use variance, is what you mean, effectively?
Uh, I don't know the exact district I have.
I think they were.
It's quite a ways back, but at any point, the ordinance only refers to district boundaries, not to uses that might exist in a residential district.
Thank you.
I have another question, if. There's a new building under construction on Story Ave that's, as I understand, going to be a clinic of some kind, a health facility, have you taken that into consideration? I mean.
Yeah, that would be located right here, so it is within the, a buffer, one of the established, 250 feet, but it would be allowed in the Story Ave and Business District if there is an older, for certain place there.
And of course, we acted before that, it would not affect the, the boundary?
Yeah, that's, and.
Before they're finished, before they're actually in use?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have some background. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
Stick around, we may follow up. Now, this gets a little bit convoluted, taking something up again that we have previously acted on, so I'm going to allow the clerk to walk us through that process of reconsideration, please.
The councillors will see, next in their packet, is an opinion from the city solicitor. As quick background for those that don't know, there were two motions to reconsider filed, one for Ordinance 16, that's later in the packet, and this one before us, which was intended to be for Ordinance 24. It unfortunately had 16 written in the first email, and then there was a quick follow-up email after the noontime deadline that said, "I meant 24." When I came back from vacation, I looked at it and I thought, it looked to me like a Scrivener's error, Scrivener being loosely defined as what, something is typed, but otherwise the mind would like something else written. And that's why I met with the president, we thought we'd seek an opinion from the city solicitor. City solicitor basically said, "It's a policy decision, not a legal interpretation, look to the council to see what their will is, they can interpret their rules the way they would like." So that's a long-winded way of saying, "I think if the council wished by motion, they could accept this motion to reconsider on Ordinance 24." Once they accepted the motion to reconsider, then would have a second vote on the motion to reconsider, if I haven't confused anybody. So the first matter before the council, if the president would like, would be to consider whether this matter can come back, and that means whether or not it was a Scrivener's error, and the will of the council would be that they would allow it, and that would be done by motion.
I'll make the motion, motion to accept as a Scrivener's error.
Excuse me, councillor, may I interrupt you for a moment before you make a motion? Because I'd like to give, I would like members, before we have a motion on the floor, if you have questions of the clerk's interpretation there, or if either of the sponsors for reconsideration would like to shed more light on this, you don't have to. If, are people comfortable with the clerk's explanation of how we got to where we are? Councillor Zede.
I understand, I talked to the clerk earlier and I expressed that my feeling was the better way to go would be to suspend the rule, as opposed to treating it as a Scrivener's error, this is just my opinion, and here's why. It's a zoning amendment, so it's, the weight is, it's probably going to be around for a long time, they're subject to challenge and so forth, so to me, a Scrivener's error is more of a typo or something like that, so I'm not, I don't have any opposition to the reconsideration, that isn't my, my play here, I'm just saying that I believe the cleaner way in 20 years, when somebody watches this, is that we suspended our rules and allowed the reconsideration, then to accept it as a Scrivener's error, but I'm open to discussion on that, I just think it's a, it's a better way to do it.
My understanding of the Scrivener's error, and I know councillor Agaman is biting his lip, is that it, it gives the intention weight, and the intent was to, although the language of the email asking for reconsideration said one thing, the intent of the sponsor has greater weight than, than the pixels that came across the wire. But now, I know councillor Agaman, you want to jump in, go ahead.
Can I make a motion? Then we can debate, I mean, so I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and accept the motion to reconsider as to Ordinance 24. And then we can talk about it.
Second.
Okay. Move to second.
Okay, just very.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'd go either way, I mean, I do think the intent, you know, based on the evidence, it makes sense that what he was trying to reconsider was what we voted down, so I, I don't have any problem with that. I'm persuaded by what councillor Zede just said, though, it's just cleaner, you know, we're all going to support it, we have the eight votes, let's just suspend the rule so that the minutes are clean, and if we get sued, we're good.
All right, further discussion on this matter.
Was that seconded by?
Councillor Tontar.
Councillor Zede. My only other point of order question is, presuming we accept this, does Order 16 fall out, in other words, does it not exist, or will we expect it to be on the floor following Order 24?
There was a second motion to reconsider by councillor Tontar.
Oh, we have two motions on both, 24 and 16.
Correct.
But the 16 one, in your case, you did want to reconsider 16. Okay, I'm lost, so tell me what's going to happen with 16, basically, that's what I want to know. Because that one, I thought we dismissed, essentially.
I've spoken too much, I'll hold my comment for a moment, go ahead.
Yeah, much to my embarrassment, I knew that councillor Earls had, had sent an email, I wasn't sure if that email would, would be acceptable, so I came down here at quarter to 12, and the deadline is noon, and I said, asked the assistant city clerk to write up what councillor Earl had put in, and I would sign it, so that's what happened. So I did not, I also intended to do 24 and not 16.
So my original question stands, though, what happens to 16 if we suspend? My thought would be, it just never, we replace it, so 16 falls out, we're not going to vote on it again tonight, we already received and filed it, it's done. 24 is what's on the floor and the only thing that's on the floor.
Let me offer a nade to oil, from the chair. It really doesn't matter, as long as we have a vehicle, we can amend from that point forward, once we have a vehicle before us.
We do want 24, Mr. President.
But 24 was the.
We want 24.
16 is dead anyway.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, I just, okay.
16 is going away.
I'm content, I got it, I'm content with it, I'm, all right, let's get back to formal order, further discussion. So, the motion is, would the clerk please?
Motion to suspend the rules to allow the reconsideration.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow reconsideration.
Of Ordinance 24.
Ordinance 24.
All those in favor? No, you know, for suspension of the rules, I think we'll take a roll call.
Yeah, needing two-thirds.
Yes.
Councillor Tontar.
Yes.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Zede.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin is recused. Councillor Earls.
Yes.
Councillor Agaman.
Yes.
Councillor Juntah.
Yes.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor President O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passed, needing to be considered? Motion passed, so now we have a motion to reconsider in front of the council.
Now, do we need to state that motion?
So moved?
What are we doing?
What are we doing? To think, so we waive the rules to reconsider 24, we don't really need a motion to reconsider.
Now, you can amend it, or you can vote on it, or, I'll make a motion to get it rolling, may I?
Please.
Motion to approve as amended in committee, that's just a motion to get it out, so.
Second.
Okay. All right, then you can amend if you want, or, you know, whatever.
Discussion.
Send it to committee.
I don't know, councillor Earls is unhappy. Let's go. What's going on? Councillor Earls.
The intent was to send this back to committee, I don't want to, I think everyone sees why I reconsidered.
Yeah.
I would have been very happy walking away the other night and saying, "You know what? Somebody made a mistake." A few councillors got chastised for it, but somebody made a mistake. As we saw, it could be that we're allowing Story Ave to be almost by right. I don't think that was the intention of the council, so, you know, I thought it over and thought, you know, I want to bring it back, I want the people to be able to have this, the people through us represented. So that's why I'm bringing this back. I don't want to debate this on the floor tonight, I think this needs work, there's a lot of questions here, are we going to stay here till 3 o'clock in the morning, that's the catch, to 3 o'clock in the morning to debate the intricacies of this, I don't see the value in that, we see that there's more complexity than, than on the surface. Or we can say, you know what, let's just not send this to committee, vote it down again, and we're stuck with what, well, we have, we will have, what was just presented to us. So I'd really like this sent to committee, honestly.
So we have a motion on the floor to.
Was that, was that motion seconded?
I'll second that.
Councillor Earls, you are moving.
I didn't make a motion, just speaking to it.
Did you make a motion?
Councillor Earls.
I made a motion, and it was seconded to approve, but, but again, if, if, if there's a motion to reconsider, to send to committee, I'd be willing to withdraw my motion, so we can debate the motion to send to committee, let's do that.
Is there some interest in moving in that direction?
I'm happy to debate the issue.
No, I don't want to withdraw my second.
Okay.
Let's discuss what we want to do here tonight, and then we can back into sending it back to committee if that's where we end up.
Okay.
I've never, never not withdrawn, so I don't know what happened in this case.
Let's just change the order, please, because I think we're starting to devolve a little bit.
Okay, well, let me.
You just speak, councillor Agaman.
I'll speak on the merits, then. Okay. I personally don't see the reason to send it back to committee, you can, you only need six votes to do that, and, but, we've debated this thing to death, I mean, and there isn't anything left, you know, all the buffer maps we had before, we've had oodles of testimony, we had a special public forum, we had someone come from the Cannabis Control Commission, we had the police marshal, we had the top lobbyist for the industry in the city, I mean, we really, we pulled out all the stops, so you can do that, honestly, what do we gain by sending it back to committee? We only have three places we can do it. Now, last time, I get it, my, my proposal was, I thought it was a compromise, okay, we'll do it at this end, and then we won't do the rest because we don't have the votes. I think it's very easy, this is what we do here, if, you know, this is what we do, is to figure out if we have eight votes for the two other areas. You send it back to committee, you kick it around for three months or whatever, until the end, end of the moratorium, what is that going to gain us? We know the issues. Do you have eight votes for Story Ave, do you not have eight votes? Do you have eight votes for Route 1, do you not have eight votes? Downtown, yes, no. We know, we just heard from the planning director, all of the parameters, we don't have to be here till 3, that's not true, we've been through this, what do you guys want to do?
Councillor Tontar, and then councillor Zede.
Yeah, I would vote against this again, because I would like to see it go to committee. I'd like the word to, to councillor, I don't think we have had sufficient discussion, the reason I asked for reconsideration, and I would also, in that motion, ask that it be a committee of the whole, that we sit down, we make one more, take one more shot. Now, principally, because I don't think we have eight votes for anything at this current moment, I'd like to hear arguments one more time in committee, but also, I'm concerned that we currently have not limited the number of marijuana establishments, and I'd like to be able to do, to consider that. There is also some confusion as to how we created the buffer zones, I know, I've talked to a lot of councillors who do not think we were creating buffer zones for anything other than the industrial pottery cultivation, we didn't discuss it, it was presented as being boilerplate, and so I'd like to have perhaps that discussed in committee, the tannery, I don't recall having any discussion on the tannery, that marijuana establishment could locate there, I'd like to have that discussion in committee, and of course, Story Ave, so I think we need to send this back to committee.
Councillor Zede.
Thank you. First of all, I have to say, I find it sort of rich that my at-large colleague, who I do like, sort of makes it sound like we're the ones that messed up, and maybe we'll be allowing it by Story Ave by accident, when in fact, what failed two weeks ago because of the votes of some councillors, was a plan to direct it in a specific, well-thought-out manner to a specific area in town. So I think that's, I have, to be honest, it seems like a little bit revisionist to me to come back and say, "Well, you know, this was, the will of the council was to screw this up and allow it into an area that didn't really get, that wasn't really intended." And so, I present the same arguments I had two weeks ago, we have a plan, this plan, and the reason I want to try and stick with the motion to approve is, we have this plan, and it is a compromised plan, and we do understand the buffer zones, and we've been through this, I've been to several meetings, I know lots of folks have, and so what I'm trying to figure out, I had hoped, to be honest with you, that the folks that declined the plan from two weeks ago would come back with some amendments that would show us what you do want. I think it's a little bit tough to deal with, "Well, I don't want this, but I don't know what I want." Well, tell us what you want, there's, there's only, I mean, as, as difficult as this challenge is, I think what Andy's presentation shows you is that it's actually a pretty finite, closed problem, right? There's three areas, they all have zoning anomalies, in my opinion, as formed by probably use variances over the years, tight downtowns, which house many different uses. I personally think the, the, you know, and part of why I voted for it when we did the cultivation was, I think the protected uses we created are perfectly fair, who wants to stand up and argue about removing a buffer zone around a nursery school? I'm not going to do that, so if somebody else wants to make that motion, please, by all means. So what has changed, or what can some folks that are not happy with this present as an idea tonight, that we could at least think about where we're going, because, again, we can go back to committee, but I don't know what, what's going to be new, I want something new, somebody give me a new idea to make it, to make it compelling to consider sending it back.
Councillor Vogel?
Did you raise your hand?
Let me.
The councillor's first.
Councillor Khan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, yeah, so, I hate that we're in this situation, and I, I do want to compromise, and I think that's why this is a great opportunity in having Andy talk through kind of what we did approve through the cultivation, and knowing about the protected uses, and knowing about the 250-foot residential for the I-1 district, I mean, I think some people here are learning new things, and if, and I'll admit, for me, I did not realize that we had the protected uses. So there's a lot of things that I felt like we've been rushing through, and I, and I don't mean any disrespect for any of the effort that the Planning and Development Committee has been doing, but I do honestly feel like, I'm so happy we're having this debate and this discussion, but, I mean, there's aspects about this business that I really feel like not everyone knows, and it would be great to hear and talk about. For example, definitely, that two that I kept talking about, well, we only get two, you know, that's, that's actually a floor, right? So it's not the cap, that's the minimum, you can't go below that, but you can go as many as you want. So I don't get why we just don't take a couple more times to really refine what we're going to produce for the city. The other thing is, you know, also at the Board of Health, Newburyport Board of Health, there's aspects there, too, that they can control, such as the hours of operation, and a whole list of other things, if you look at past, you know, other presentations on this matter. So I would support sending it back to committee, so we could have others engaged, and the conversation could be a little bit more informal but thorough. So I do support going back to committee, and again, I do want to say, the planning board, that second meeting that was done on this, the planning board gave their feedback, and actually added some concepts and aspects to the debate, and then their meeting closed, and the Planning and Development Committee reopened and voted and made their decision. So I'm, I'm being absolutely honest, I felt like there was no opportunity for a discussion after we got some information, so that's, so I am supporting going back to committee for that discussion.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Vogel.
Thank you very much. I also believe that we should go back to committee. I think that, I certainly was not the understanding that when we were discussing the restricted uses or the protected uses, that it was anything other than cultivation. My mistake, but I mistake of others as well. It kind of all of a sudden showed up. I also think, and the phrase was used, boilerplate. We came into this, it was boilerplate. And at the time, the state, this was offering these different protected uses. Those have all gone away. All the protected uses have gone away except for K-12 schools. And I think we ought to take a look at that. We ought to take a look at, the state is spending a ton of money to the Cannabis Control Commission. There's a lot of money, there's a lot of effort, there's a very serious effort going on with the state in order to get this industry up and running. And the guidelines from the state are, our job, our job is to help this industry get going. It's stated clearly. And the more informal ad-committee discussions will allow us the opportunity to go through all these things. If it fails at that point in time, so be it. But I think we need to go back, I think a lot has changed since this has first come to us. We've gotten a lot smarter, the state's gotten a lot smarter, there's a lot more has come our way, and we really need to discuss it and hash it out. If we get in there, and you're, and it's dead set and it dies, so be it. Or let it die right here, either way, and then we'll end up with what we end up with.
Counselor Egman.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is, councilors were not aware of the work that was done before. That they did not understand the law before. Well, you understand it now, and a council, a committee of the whole is what? This is the committee of the whole. We are the committee of the whole. I really cannot understand, you keep saying you want a more informal, what does that mean? You think you can do, you know, there's some sort of backroom deal you want to do? I don't, really, I don't understand. We're either debating in public, or as the committee of the whole, or we debate it in public as the council. It's the same 11 people. So again, we know all the facts. Why, why, why are you doing this? And, you know, the other question, you know, this new idea about the two marijuana retailers, I'm sorry. I got to call you out on that one. Okay. So last week, last time we met, one of the arguments against limiting it to Route 1, where many of us who wanted that compromise, the six of us said, well, it's a start. You know, once we know how the industry goes, maybe we can expand it. It was, no, no, you can't do that, because we're capped at two retailers. That was the testimony. That was the argument, we're capped at two, we can only have two. Now I'm hearing that it's a good thing that it be capped at two. So it's a 180-degree turn, and you're saying, we need to go and study that. First of all, you could study it right here. Second of all, that's not correct. The state law says, only the city's voters can limit the number of marijuana retailers to fewer than 20% of the off-premises liquor licenses. So let me get this straight. We started out saying, you know, some councilors said they wanted to have a ballot measure. There was a flip-flop on that. No, we don't want to have a ballot measure. Now you want to have a ballot measure again? Please, give us something, give us a proposal, and we're here, we're all here, we're all away from our families. This is a set date, we have to be here. What are you waiting for? Give us your proposal.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I will. I mean, so, again, and I'm sorry, I could sense the frustration, but part of it is, you know, having Andy show maps and go through buffer zones, look at 200, 250, there's like, that's work. I'm sorry, I mean, I don't see how we're going to be like, okay, Andy, you sit there at the computer, while we're going to ask you about different maps on how it could look. Because I feel like our only option is go for your plan of the rotary, the ward two councilor's plan. If you don't do this, then we can't really explore anything else, because this, all that work has already been done, and this is all we can really do. And I don't appreciate that, I'm actually trying to, you know, I want to do some good here. I mean, I don't know how else to say it. I mean, at the committee, if we go to committee, which I don't see any harm in that, and maybe that's the point I'm missing. Maybe there's a harm in that, and I'm not understanding it. But over there, I feel like we could have more of a thorough discussion on what the different maps would look like. I want, maybe residential buffers would make sense, talk about the protected uses. The two, and I did say a cap of two, because that's how I understood it. I actually read, and then I was, it was pointed out later that that was incorrect. But no one corrected me on the floor two weeks ago, so if you guys all knew that and kept it to yourself, I feel like that's unfair, and we're not having an honest discussion. Or if you guys also didn't know this, let's be honest here, how much do we understand?
Counselor Zede.
I'd like to make an effort to veer back towards the substance, and less so about the process. So when I asked what has changed, my question is, what has changed? So two weeks ago, I stood right here, and I said, I don't want it to be downtown. I would think I was pretty blunt about that, I don't think there was any, you know, and I think other councilors may disagree, although I don't feel they stated it as clearly. So, and I'm very sympathetic to the Ward 5 voters, who I think deserve some respect as well. I think the Story Ave area was fraught with issues with the use variances, you saw. I think if we were going to do Story Ave, or even think about it, the minimum we'd have to do would be to at least do the same buffer zone we did for the industrial zone, which basically knocks out most of it. So here's the compromise I made, in my head. I don't really, deep down, when I look at the zoning map, doesn't matter what I think about marijuana, I just don't, I'm not seeing really a great zone for it anywhere. That's my true belief. Deep down, when I look at the zoning map, it's a mess, and I credit that to an old city. I just think, over 200 years plus, people did weird things in weird places, and weird natural land use patterns emerged. And this is not just an issue that's unique to retail, but in fact, to many things we do. We have creep in the business park, and then those folks get upset with us. We have creep in the downtown, we have waterfront west, which now has an overlay district, we have all these things. So my compromise was, even though that's really what I think, which is when I look at the maps of any buffer zone, they all stink, and there's really not a great, great way to go with any of them, that we compromise by doing what I think is, you know, is the best we can do, which is the Route 1 traffic circle. My other compromise was on the number of allowable, giving up on the limit of two. I recognize that, and I was going to say it a couple weeks ago, but I just said, you know what? That's part of my compromise in this, is we're going to allow it, and we're not going to try and work towards a cap, whether that's done by ordinance or by vote. So what I want to hear from the folks that want to send it back to committee is, what's your idea? So after nine months, you don't have any idea, nothing you can share, all the argument is, it needs to go back to committee for more discussion. Anything? Do you want it to be on Story Ave? Do you want it to be downtown? Do you want to shrink all the buffer zones down to zero, potentially, if you're allowed to do that, or reduce them below the state minimums? I mean, give me something on the substance. Let's maybe talk about that instead of the process for a moment. Maybe I can get some new ideas myself.
Counselor Vogel.
All right, I'll give it a shot.
Please.
Yeah, so first of all, it's not the state minimum, right? Or the state, the 500 feet is the state guideline. We can take it back down to wherever we want, it says it clearly. The state says that we need to do really due diligence to get this economy, this new addition to the economy going. Sure, I'd love Story Avenue, sorry. I would love downtown, sorry. I think, I look at downtown because I see downtown as a dying place. We're going to be restaurants, we're going to be real estate offices. And I see, I see the opportunity to put another retail down there that might bring people down there and go out to dinner, buy a candle, whatever it might be. So that's my argument. I think that we, the narrowness of the Route 1 traffic circle is just that, it's too narrow. The new restrictions, the state has taken away the 500 feet or the restriction around daycare. They only care about K-12. So let's do away with that, and then that would open up the traffic circle even more. Let's look at these things that have changed. That was a boilerplate that came off of there. And it was stated in the meeting that this is boilerplate. Things have changed since that time. And I think that we need to go back and take the due diligence. The state is encouraging us to do the right thing, no matter what you think about it, it's here. 55% of this community voted in favor of legalizing marijuana. It's our job to do the best job that we possibly can to put it in place. And in committee, in committee, we're informal, we can do this a little bit more openly without being honored by the chair, and we can really get down to it. We can talk point by point by point by point, without having to stand up, sit down, and go back and forth, and listen, and hash it out. That's my thinking. I'd love Story Avenue, you want to know? All of Story Avenue, all of downtown, tannery, all of the traffic circle, every retail zone in the community, and no buffer zones, there's my plan. But we're not going to get anywhere, we're not going to do that right now. That's, we can take it point by point, in committee, we can do it, and not be here until midnight, and not get anywhere tonight. That's all.
I would like to speak, and I'm going to ask Counselor Earls if the members would allow me to share some thoughts. Counselor Earls?
Can you take the chair for a moment? Thanks, Andy. Go the other way. Of course. Whenever I'd like to speak.
Thank you. Look, there's a lot of frustration here, I appreciate that, I understand that. Some of us are prepared to act on it, they know exactly what they want, right now. But what I'm going to share with you is what I shared with some of you individually over the past several days. And that is that I heard different things from different people, and I could not, you know, I had my grid, find a way to eight, whether it was the traffic circle area alone, or the traffic circle and Story Avenue, or all of the business districts, I couldn't get to eight. And I thought, the way my own mind works, is we gave ourselves until December 31st to finally settle the issue. So what's the harm in coming together as a committee of the whole in somewhat less formal circumstances? I understand the frustrating, some of us are ready to go right now, some of us are not. I thought that would be a reasonable thing to do. Use the time that we gave ourselves, it took some of the pressure off as we've, and we've learned more information. More information's come to us since that, and some of our previous knowledge was perhaps incorrect, and now we have better knowledge. The other thing that strikes me is this, that some of us are also responding to constituencies out there. And they're paying close attention now, but they weren't a month ago, two months ago. But they are starting to focus now. I personally would like to go, and I'll tell you, we're a constituency that I have presented to you before, and that is the, many of the downtown retailers. I want to go ask them again, are you still, are you still opposed to retail marijuana sales in the downtown area? I understand through second or third parties that there has been some change in opinion there. I want to hear it from the horses, get a record, and see, well, you know, what do you say now? So that's one of the things that I would like to do in anticipation of having another night to discuss this. And what I heard from some of you was a similar interest in talking to other people, in sounding out the ideas of other constituencies. I think that's the advantage of deferring, sending back to committee, and making it a committee of the whole led by the Committee on Planning and Development, since the Planning and Development Committee has such expertise in zoning issues. If you reject that, we can slog through it tonight, I don't know how far we will get. But I couldn't count to eight, and we need eight, if we're going to act. And that was my reason. Thank you.
Are you going back, or can we keep playing?
Yeah, that'll be it for me tonight, then. Thank you, Counselor Earls.
Thank you.
Counselor Tom, there, and then we'll go around and reconsider.
One of the reasons I would like to have committee is so that we could have KP Law there to help us out. And I'm quite confused on whether or not, you know, what the cap is, and whether or not we have to put to the voter. You know, I understand, look, reading the law is not like reading an equation, all right? So, you know, over the decades, I've realized that when I read the law, and it looks like 1 plus 1 equals 2, lawyers tell me it equals 11, and they win. So I read 94G, and what I read is that we only have to put it to the voters if we're going to limit it to fewer than 20%.
Yeah, that's right.
But if we limit it to two, all right, and not more, right? And those of you who say, just set the limit at two, you can't have three, right? So why, we don't have to put that to the voter, do we? I mean, so again, it would help to me to have, never mind. The solicitors.
To wish to speak. Counselor Jenta?
Never mind. You know, just to sort of recap a little bit, and I have to applaud the Ward 2 city councilor for his thoughts earlier. This has been a nine-month process, where we've done forums, we've interviewed the department heads, we have gone through everything to come to a conclusion on where we felt the best place to start. And now we're talking about, you know, limiting it to two. That could be done at any time, that has no bearing on where we put it. And, you know, the thoughts about, well, the health inspector said, we know, we've talked to the health inspector multiple times. He's already told us what his issues are. But the health department has their ability to make whatever restrictions they want that's outside our body, just like when they decided to make the smoking age 19. They didn't have to ask our permission, they lawfully did it because it's their purview. So we're hearing a lot of things that are sort of around the edges, like we didn't know. What we didn't know two years, two weeks ago, was that if you voted against this, what you really wanted, you weren't going to get either. That's what you found out. You found out when you voted against getting it down the traffic circle, that you lost downtown. Well, we could have told you that if you asked us. You rolled the dice, and it didn't work out for you. So now you want to go back at it again. I mean, we have done nine months, am I frustrated? Yes. This is the best spot to start in the city, and we have a plan together to move forward. I'm sorry that what you thought was going to happen two weeks wasn't accurate. You took downtown out. I'm sorry, but that's the reality. There's nothing wrong with this proposal, and it's a great place to start. And as I said a few weeks ago, the folks that are in this business have more money than God. They're not going to mine the traffic circle. They're going to buy a large portion of the traffic circle and get in business. I'm just sorry, you just have to look around the state and see what's going on, to see what's going to happen here. This is ridiculous to send this back to committee, because over the last nine months, you didn't pick up on a few outside issues. This is about zoning a place to get started.
Counselor Zede, and then I'll come back to the side of the table.
So a couple thoughts. One is, I do want to respond to the, first of all, I appreciate the openness about what you want. It's refreshing, right? Because we were wasting so much time about the process now, I haven't heard much about the substance. So I appreciate it, I disagree, but I appreciate it. Okay? What I disagree with also is that we don't owe anything to the industry. I think this is kind of like a theme, you know, our job is to represent the residents of Newburyport. If the marijuana industry survives, great, if it fails, it's also fine with me, as long as I did my best to represent the residents. So you've said it several times now, that the state is telling us to do the best we can for this industry. We will do the same thing we do for every industry, which is, you know, within reason, zone it in appropriate areas in the city. I'm not going to stick my neck out for an industry, especially over the residents that I'm supposed to represent. So that's an important point to me. I understand the limit on them for both the Ward 2 and the Ward 4 councilors. I actually think they converge, but maybe have a difference of language. If you want of less than the 20%, that's when you need a ballot vote. If you want to do more than 20, or have no limit, you can do that by order of the city council, that's my understanding. So I have two thoughts for you. One is, I would be happy to make a motion to amend to this, to limit it to two. If that's a concern of some of the councilors, as is stated here, I'm going to put your feet to the fire, and I'm going to motion to amend to add a language at the end of the special permit section, which says, "The City of Newburyport shall issue no more than two," which is my understanding, after talking with Andy, who by the way, has shown me all these maps before, that were somewhere around 1.8, which you shouldn't round down, you round up. So I'd be happy to make it, because it's fine with me. So that's a motion. And my last comment before I sit down is, you know, maybe another way out to add a third option to this triangle tonight of approve or refer back to committee, is we do what we've been having fun with, with the custom house for the past couple weeks, which is put it on the table. And if the folks that are unhappy with it want to bring back substantive amendments for us to beat up on this floor that are well-thought-out, so we're not here trying to hash them out publicly, or not publicly, but quickly, so to say, then they could do that, that's just another option. But my motion to amend, and I can give the clerks some more specific language, but I was thinking in section XXX-C, special permit required, just a pending sentence at the end that said, "The City of Newburyport shall issue no more than two retail marijuana licenses." That's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Counselor, I heard Counselor Jenta first. Further discussion. Counselor?
So the city shall issue no more than two retail licenses?
I'm sorry. I didn't, I'm...
Counselor, please.
Correct.
Okay. Shall issue no more than two.
And it was to be inserted where?
At the end of section XXX-C, special permit required, final sentence.
All right, if we're headed down this road, is the discussion of the amendment. Counselor Earls?
I never said anything about quantity, so I'm not, I'm not sure where I'm supposed to go with this. So if you're counting on me for some vote, I never talk about quantity, I never talk about 1, 2, 3, 100. So I'm not sure where this vote really wants me to go.
Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the councilor from Ward 1 is trying to appease me, because I do want to see a limit. So again, one of the reasons to go back to a discussion is, what do we want to get to eight votes? I'm sorry, that's the reality, and my apologies again, I know we're... I know we're debating it for so long, but by now, we could have just referred it to committee and had maybe a couple of meetings and come back together. Here's something that I've mentioned before, and I said it last week too, was the overlay, the concept of an overlay district. Where do I want it? I want it downtown. I'm not one that's totally in supportive story Ave or the Rotary. And I think I've mentioned this before, and I have for the last few meetings. But am I going to be happy with the compromise that I know we all have to make? I can sit down with everybody and hear what our arguments are. And again, I go back to the overlay district, and I know everyone cringes every time I say that. But honestly, I think the counselor from Ward 1 said it. It's a challenging area. Newburyport's got an interesting lay of the land, and we're trying to fit things in for retail. But maybe it's worth looking creatively with an overlay district like other cities have done. Thank you.
Counselor Tantar?
I have a point of order. So let's --
Counselor.
Excuse me. Apologize. Point of order. So if we pass this amendment, you know, that changes ordinance 15, all right? And then if we don't pass the entire order, all right, can we then move to send it to committee?
No.
No. Wait, wait. Say that one more time. I apologize.
Counselor Agarwal?
Yes. I offered way at the beginning that I would withdraw the motion and refer it back to committee. And if that's the will, I would do that. I haven't done it yet because I -- you know, the second or wouldn't do it, but --
Right.
But can you ask your question again, please?
Good. But if I withdraw, he needs to get someone -- the motion dies. He can't keep it alive as a second. He can't do that.
But the question was, if we vote to include the cap of 2, and then we reject what is 15?
24.
24. Okay, that's what was confused.
Just add 9.
One number is --
Number 24. Can we then send it back to committee?
No, you can't.
No. Then it's dead. Then we've acted on it.
But if you pass the amendment, it's still on the floor.
Yes. No, no. If we pass the amendment, but then we --
Right.
Then we'll vote on the --
On the substance of the --
No, you pass the amendment, it's not on the floor. You pass the amendment, it's on the floor with the motion.
It's still on the floor, waiting for an emotion to amend, approve, sorry.
Counselor Agarwal?
Okay. Can we limit this to the amendment, please?
Oh, I beg your pardon. No.
Let's see if we can settle that one first, and then --
Let's deal with the amendment.
Shall we?
Counselor Jenta?
I just have one question. Since we're putting into zoning here, if the cap of 2 dies either at -- not in the amendment process, but say it passes, the amendment passes, but then it gets into the main body of ordinance 24. If that dies, does that keep us from passing a cap for 2 years because it would have died in a zoning ordinance?
Let's see if the parliamentarian can help us with this.
It's a legal question.
It's not an easy question.
I just want to be careful. I always had envisioned this cap as being a separate -- a separate ordinance, not attached to the --
Another procedural issue that I'll bring up later.
I don't think we're going to be clear on that right now.
For a reason.
Counselor Zede?
I'd like to render an opinion, but I don't know.
On the amendment, please.
On the amendment, yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to ask for your support on it. I mean, look, if you want to see the arguments for this, go back and rewind the tape to when we passed cultivation. We stood on the same floor, and we offered amendments as to why we were going to limit it to a number of square footage. There were several arguments for that, and I believe the arguments are consistent throughout. So I don't need to reinvent the wheel. Many of those arguments were made by many of you here, so that's --
Is there further discussion on the amendment of limiting the number of retail establishments to 2? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on that amendment, please.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin is absent. Counselor Earls?
No.
Counselor Agarwal?
Abstain.
Is that an absent?
I have no idea.
Abstain? Present? Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Needing 6 to amend, the motion to amend, so it is now a motion approved as amended.
So the --
And may I mention one thing?
Yes, I know you wanted to jump in on this.
I've been bothered by one thing. We did not vote to reconsider. We voted to waive the rules.
No, it was a combo motion, I believe.
No, we did both. To waive the rules, to reconsider.
And, thank you. I'm also, I did not know that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm the one that should have known that, but I didn't know.
And I'm going to take just a moment, since we are partway there.
Sure.
Because Mr. Port has been trying to catch our eye, and perhaps he can give something to the --
Mr. Port. Thank you. I'm sorry, I wanted to intervene there, but obviously I need to follow your procedures. Just as the Director of Planning and Development, if you're remiss, if I don't just try to save you some time because I see you going into the discussion of 2, limiting it to 2. One, I don't think that it would be legally permissible for you to refer to it in a solid number, meaning 2. The statute refers to it as a percentage of the number of liquor licenses, so really what you're referring to is 20% of the number of package stores in the community. Two, the -- this is straight from a presentation given by Kelpelman and Page, and I know I summarized some of this during a presentation when we had several different public hearings with the planning board through the Planning and Development Committee. This is from Kelpelman and Page. "If a municipality voted in favor of question 4 on November 8, 2016," which Newburyport did, "then 2 votes must be taken," and this is including the ballot vote, "before a prohibiting or limiting by law ordinance can be effective." So my point there is, I don't think you're really in a position right now to adopt or impose the limitation there. I think that the options you have before you are without a ballot question right now. You may decide to go back for a ballot question, but I haven't heard that presented this evening. So what you're really looking at is, what can be done right now, or if you're sending it back to committee? I will say, just for myself as planning director, having seen over a year of discussion on this, I'm not convinced that sending it back to committee is going to result in a difference from the same questions you have right now, which are where to put this use.
Thank you. And then you -- Counselor Agarwal?
Okay. All right. I perhaps was unfair with some councilors who weren't as up to speed over the last nine months. I apologize. The fact is, I think what Andy just said is, puts his finger on it. I don't think sending it to committee is going to do anything, okay? I do think you need more time. We have a proposal from Counselor Vogel, okay? You know, roughly, he wants it everywhere. And again, refreshing. Thank you. And Counselor at Large Khan said downtown. If y'all need more time to come up with amendments to that effect, we could table it. I can see that. But frankly, I don't want to be spending any more of my precious time away from my family on something I've already spent nine months on, when we have to come and meet here every 2 weeks anyway. It's just, really, please, don't do that. And, you know, the boilerplate argument, I don't understand that one. Because, again, again, I should be more forgiving. I realize not everyone reads what's in the packet. But the -- it's not boilerplate. And as I explained in committee, the compromise that was presented was that we would lessen the buffer zone to 250 feet from protected uses so it could work down the traffic circle. In addition, if you read it, it says that it would change the way that you measure the nearest point from residential districts, and we'd shorten it down to 100 feet. So we did not take boilerplate from anything and stick it in. It's just not true. Okay? So we figured out a way to make it work. So again, if you want to table it and come forward with an amendment, that's great. But the only argument that I've heard for going back to committee is if you want to get testimony from outside that we didn't get before. That was what the president said. He was saying he wants to hear from the downtown merchants. That would be, I guess, it would be better in committee to do that than to table it. That's true.
Let me, before we go in any other direction, I'm going to ask all the councilors to refrain from impugning the motives or questioning the diligence of any other member. There's something I was going to bring up during good of the order, but I guess it's something that is appropriately said at this time. Counselor Zede, and then Counselor Vogel.
So I need to go back to Andy, to your comment that you just said. Can you read that to me one more time? Because that's not how -- so you said you have to have 2 votes, meaning you think even to limit it to 2. I appreciate the comment on the verbiage, certainly the 20% understand that part, but the second part I didn't understand.
Sure. It says that, and this is, I had to have a verbal conversation with Kelpelman and Page about this specific point as well. Their presentation says, "Then 2 votes must be taken before a prohibiting or limiting by law can take -- or ordinance can take effect." The conversation I had with Kelpelman and Page was, and their opinion was to me verbally, although I don't think I had this in a memo from them, was that the council could adopt a provision like that, but it would not be enforceable until there was a ballot vote. So you could put that language in there right now if you wanted to, but it would have no effect until you went to the voters and had a ballot vote.
So when you -- who are they referring to when they say 2 votes?
I'm sorry. One vote being the City Council to approve or change the ordinance, and the other one being the ballot vote that's consistent with that.
Voters. Okay. Clarify that. Doesn't mean 2 votes of the council in consecutive meetings.
Right. They're referring to 2 separate things. One is the ballot vote from the voters, and the other one is the City Council vote.
Got it. So it goes in as provision, but it's unenforceable unless there's a vote of the residents. So next question is, how do I fix the language to be 20% instead of 2?
I have language that was provided to us by legal counsel for that purpose, but like I said, it wouldn't be any effect, of course, until the ballot vote.
But how do I do it?
Is he saying whether you have 20% or 2 in there, it's still --
Well, he doesn't like my language because I said limit it to 2, which, you know, so I'm trying to figure out how to fix it now. I don't want to reconsider and fix it later. I want to fix it now.
Demand.
Yeah, I would give you the language, but I'd have to hear it again, too.
But what's the procedure for me to do?
Oh, the procedure would be --
Because the amendment was --
You have a motion approved as amended. You could make a motion to amend.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Do you want me to read the language that --
Yes, please.
Just a moment, please. What do we -- I'm going to ask Counselor Zede, what's your intention here?
My intention is to get the language of the amendment in line with what Andy, with what Director Port suggests. Same intent, just get the language correct.
Good argument for tabling.
So there's a motion to amend.
Go ahead. Please, go ahead.
So the motion will amend on the floor is --
Can you read the language you would suggest?
The language that they suggested was, "The number of marijuana retailers permissible to be located in the city shall be limited to 20% of the number of licenses issued within the city for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises where sold pursuant to general laws, Chapter 138, Section 15. In the event that 20% of said licenses is not a whole number, the limit shall be rounded up to the nearest whole number," which in this case, as was pointed out, is promoted to 2.
So moved.
Yeah. Okay. Seconded. Discussion. Counselor Tantar?
Just on the law, I think I've figured this out. It does not say what KP Law said. It says if you -- you know, everything, the first part, yes. The second part, this is number 2, "Limit the number of marijuana retailers to fewer than 20% of the number of licenses issued for alcohol." Fewer than 20%.
Yeah, I think, right?
However, clause 1 says, and this is what's relevant and hasn't been mentioned, which is why I wanted to send it to committee so we have a lawyer there, all right, that represents this, right, that knows the stuff. One, prohibit the operation of one or more types of marijuana establishments from the -- we already limited cultivation. We can't now limit retail without putting it to the voters. My interpretation. I don't know if it's right.
I make my motion now, hoping for a second.
It was seconded by Counselor Agarwal. It's on the floor for discussion.
Move the question.
This is the 20%?
Yeah, to replace the 2, my 7 words with 20,000 words, which are more accurate, to his credit.
You might get challenged, you might have obstructed. All right, the motion, does the clerk have that motion?
I do. Motion to amend to 20% as read by Director Port. Andy Port, I will get a copy of that if the motion passes.
All right. Is there any further discussion before we vote on this amendment to our previously amended --
Point of order? I just have --
Counselor Khan?
Did I just hear correctly from Counselor Tantar that we are, we cannot limit? So I guess I'm confused.
No, we can do it, but we have to put it to the voters after we vote.
So I'm a little now -- so this is very confusing. If I'm going to say yes to something, but we can't do it, I can't say yes anymore. So I am just going to be honest. I'm very confused by that statement.
Counselor Shan?
So I wanted it at the traffic circle, just like the other 6 folks that voted for it. But what I don't want is what we have now, which is the do-nothing, just let it go. But right now, if folks think getting more input from outsiders is the way to go, and it will sort of reduce the tension that's going on right now, then one more Planning and Development Committee, the whole meeting, just do it. Because right now, we're not getting anywhere. We're just arguing amongst ourselves. And if people feel like you can talk to the downtown businesses, then just be done with it. One more meeting, end the Planning and Development Committee, get it over with, and call it a day.
Counselor Zede?
I'd like to respond to the at-large counselor's question about the motion on the floor. So what I think is in question is whether you have to have a vote or not. That's what's in question. But either way, you have to have it in your ordinance to begin with, so --
A vote, a public vote.
Public referendum. But you have to have it in your ordinance to begin with. So if you believe in limiting it to 20%, you want to vote for this, and then we need to figure out, do we really need to go to the voters, or is it enforceable just by having it be in the ordinance? But we can't go out to a referendum without having it here first. So if you agree with the principle, I urge you to stick with it. I will apologize, too, for the frustration, but I'm not the one that wanted to do it on the floor like this. That's why we had several months of this stuff. So we're trying our best to all roll with it, and I think this would be, if we agree, and then I have some other comments as well.
Further discussion? Counselor Vogel?
Thank you. And I'm going to take the liberties of the other councilors as well.
I'm, so I'm, I'm against the, putting a cap on under the 20%. Say it out loud, just to, just to put it out there. But on top of it all, I do my due diligence, and I, and to be, to have it thrown out in a nice, quiet manner by a fellow counselor that my due diligence hasn't been done, or I don't understand the law, that, that's really disrespectful, sir, and I really would appreciate it. All I'm trying to do here is I'm telling you that from the time that we started it, and the words boilerplate actually came out of your mouth, from the time we started this to where we are now, there has been a lot of movement. There's been a lot of reading going on, the state has done a lot of movement, they've, they've pulled back on their protected uses, there's a lot of stuff that has gone on. I say we go back at it and look at it considering that. I'm happy with not doing anything and having it at Story Avenue and whatever else we can eke out. If that's, if that's satisfactory for everybody, I'll argue until midnight tonight, but we don't have eight votes, and we'll end up with Story Avenue and whatever else we can eke out. And, and that's where we'll be. But come on, you guys, really, we're arguing just to argue.
That's the question.
Yeah, so move the question.
Move the question, yeah, on the amendment, Mr. President.
The amendment is...
A motion to amend to 20% and with the language as read by Andrew Port.
All right. We'll take a roll call on that matter.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
No.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin is, not present, Counselor Earls.
No.
Counselor Agarwal.
Abstain.
No.
Abstain.
Abstain. Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor President Connell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I withdraw my motion to approve, so we can move on. Okay, thank you. I don't withdraw my second, I don't know what happens in that case, but I think he has the, I think he has the overriding, if I don't have a...
There's no motion.
I'd need somebody to replace him.
I think there's no motion if the moving party withdraws it, even though the second...
Yeah, but he can, he can make the motion if he wants.
He could, he could.
You could do that. So moved, just for the sake of discussion.
What are you moving?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve.
And the amendment I trust is to the 20%.
As, and as, and the amendments that came out of committee, so as it came out of committee with the additional floor amendment. That's, that's the version that's in the packet.
The version that's in the, the version that's in the packet.
Is there a second to this motion?
Let me catch up, Mr. President. So we got a mo, new motion approved on the floor, as amended previously. We need a second.
I did not hear a second. Is there a second? Second. So we have the motion back on the floor. We have several options. We can discuss it and try to resolve it tonight. We could refer it to committee. We could table it. Counselor Earls, you had your hand up, go ahead.
Thank you, I almost, I'm very close to regretting having reconsidered this. Now, I may be wrong, and please, someone correct me, but if this was not reconsidered, now that, well, we're not even down to two, so let's pretend we're, we're at three, there'd be one at the tannery, there could be one at the traffic circles, squeeze it in, and there could be one at Story Ave. Okay, maybe I should just kill this and let that go, I'm not sure what I'm doing here anymore. I want a compromise, I did not like the little sliver of traffic circle, that's all I was reconsidering. Wasn't reconsidering a number, wasn't reconsidering anything else, I never liked it. So then to say, oh, we all, we, that's what we agreed on, I wasn't part of the "we," I'm not part of a voting block, I didn't like the little sliver of traffic circle. That's it, that's why I voted no. Then when it got to like, wait, it failed? Holy mackerel, that means it's blown up. And I actually called the planner, he was out, he was out, and said, is it true that what we did last night, it, it opens it up? And, and he wasn't there, unfortunately, so I asked around, I asked another community, asked another who knew the industry, and said, yeah, it kind of sort of did. So I'm not sure, I thought I was sort of putting it out to saying, this is not what the council intended. The result was not what we intended, but maybe it is. Maybe we do want one in the tannery, maybe we do want one at Story Ave, maybe we do want one at the traffic circle, I don't know anymore.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zied.
It's gonna be my last comment, so, again, with all due respect, it would be great if you could tell us what you do want to do, and I don't, I still don't know the answer to that, I think some of the other counselors have at least given us some idea of what we're talking about here. So I'm like a dog with a bone, and I, I want to resolve the underlying fundamental policy question here, which is what we've actually spent the amount of time at least talking about. So here's what I think, I wanted to respond to the question of the overlay district, because I've heard this now a few times. So my, my understanding of zoning is, we, we're not in a position with zoning to go in and pick individual buildings to say, this is where this should go. We've heard discussion in past weeks over vacant spots downtown, that would be a great spot. Well, great, if you're proprietor, you should be listening, because we're giving you all the insider real estate tips here on the council floor. Our job is to create a zone, and zones are large, and the, the key with zoning is that these, these special words, lots that are undistinguishable from one another. So a, you know, creating this overlay district is not going to solve the underlying zoning of which is, if you look at three parcels next to each other, and basically all three are indistinguishable, that you can zone one differently from the other two. That's a fundamental case, case of how zoning works. So I am trying to hit the actual policy question to tell you what I think about them, and with that, I am going to withdraw my motion to approve, and I'm going to finally let this go, but I wanted to get my comments out, and I appreciate the second for the, for me to address the overlay, and if you give me any more policy questions, I will, I will eat them, and I will, I will answer every single one of them. So with that said...
And I withdraw my second.
I would like to motion to refer this to Planning and Development Committee, so that we can have a meeting. I'm sorry?
Thank you.
And committee of the whole, yes, thank you.
Second. Let me ask the clerk for an interpretation, if we don't have a motion before us, can we refer something that's not before us to committee?
The matter has not been acted on, because the motions were withdrawn. So we have every motion withdrawn, and I just heard a motion to refer to P and D and committee of the whole.
As amended, so it goes back in with the amendment we talked about.
As it is in the package.
No, as it, as it was amended on the floor tonight.
So much for my...
With the additional amendment.
No. As it, as it was offered to the council under reconsideration.
The motion never went to vote.
No, but we voted on the amendment, so why can't I send it back the way it finished here on the floor?
Because that amendment was to a motion to approve, that motion approved was...
Withdrawn.
Yeah.
We can do it in committee.
Don't worry.
Go to committee.
As we originally...
So, the...
Did it get seconded?
There's a second on the floor by Counselor Tantar.
The motion is to refer to committee...
Planning and Development.
On Planning Development and Committee of the Whole.
Don't forget that.
So the motion...
So point of war, I'm sorry.
So everyone understands that that is what is before us right now, way around the block.
I think the moving party has a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Zied.
So you're, you, you think the amendment died because the motion to approve died? I thought the motion to amend, I didn't motion to amend and approve, I motioned to amend. I believe that amendment should stick, and it should go back to committee as amended, and that gives us a point to talk about what we just spent two hours hashing out here.
It doesn't work there. I, I think I'm clear about this, it's a motion to amend, the motion to approve, the motion to approve is withdrawn, so it's gone off the floor. So the only thing left is now your new motion, motion to refer to Planning and Development and Committee of the Whole. But then again, I've learned to be humble about this, does anyone have a different opinion?
Now, let me ask the clerk for a further interpretation, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I guess I will.
I do.
The item that would be referred to Planning Development and Committee of the Whole is the item that is being reconsidered, that we started the discussion on.
Ordinance 24 as present in the package.
Unamended.
Correct.
Which would also allow the committee and the Committee of the Whole to say, hey, we want to find a way to limit this in some other ways. They could amend it there, make recommendations to the full council at that time.
Absolutely.
Counselor Agarwal, did you want to chime in?
So I was going to say is that I'll be chairing that for the Committee of the Whole, it's a free-for-all, bring it. I will discuss it.
Another term of art in the legal...
I don't have anything to back it up, so. I think when you work hard on amendment, it should mean something, but, okay.
Counselors? We understand what's before us, and that is a referral to committee. Move, let's do this again, do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, again, motion to refer to Planning and Development Committee of the Whole, Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Zied.
No.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Agarwal.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor President Connell.
Yes.
Motion passes, matter then referred to committee.
Thank you, Counsel. Mr. President, can I just, yeah, I'm allowed, give a couple people a moment. Counselor Junta?
Just a quick question, so this went back to committee, does it already have one approval, or does it need to go through two readings again when it comes back out of committee?
Has zero approval.
Has no approval.
So there's no approval.
It's in committee. I'll explain it good to the order, don't worry.
Yes, let's go to committees, please, and Budget and Finance is first.
And remove Order Number 60, host agreement for marijuana cultivation.
Second.
You betcha, yes.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
We need Devlin. Ms. Devlin, do you go home?
All those in favor who opposed, suspend the rules.
And waive the rules.
And remove. It's not in the package.
So it's two thirds. We should do that on roll call vote.
Wait, what is it? Can I just explain what it is we're doing?
Yes, please.
Yes, please, help.
Counselor Tanta, what did you move? You moved to remove...
Waive the rules and remove from committee.
Order Number 60.
Because it's not in the packet.
Oh.
There you go. Well, okay, did you get a second?
Second.
It did. Can we debate it? Discussion, yeah.
Debate.
Yes. Counselor Agarwal.
What are you going to do with it?
Receive and file.
Okay. Thank you.
You're going to try to discharge the regular order, I know we're tired.
Okay, works for me. Any further discussion?
No.
This is just removing and waiving the rules.
All those in favor.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Discussion.
The, this host agreement is no longer relevant, the, so the agreement with the landlord, no, the owner of the property fell through, so it's gone, we don't need it, receive and file.
Counselor Zied, quick comment, I'm supporting the receiving file because it just makes no sense, but it doesn't solve the underlying question about who approves host agreements, this is a bone of contention. Yeah, let me just finish my comments, please. So basically, we would like, I would like to ask if we can get an opinion from the same attorney on this, because it's going to come to a question at some point, and this is a logical time to ask for that request. In my research, some communities are voting on them, I found some articles, and in other communities, they're not, so clearly it's a point of contention across the state, so that's my request.
Good idea.
On the receiving file.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Did you have anything else in Budget and Finance, Counselor?
Yes, remove Communication Number 82, fiscal year 2018, year-end financial report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor taking this out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Discussion, Counselor Tanta.
Yeah, this is the end, end-of-year report, which is preliminary to having an audited financial report, and, you know, the purpose is to maintain accountability and transparency to the city. In reviewing, in reviewing it, what I examined is, is the fact that total transfers in the budget amounted to less than 1% of the entire budget. So I'm trying to judge how, how good did the city do in the budget process? I think that's pretty good. But then I went and looked online, all right, to, oh yeah, oh, sorry, we forgot about you.
Our long-lost son. I apologize, no, seriously, I apologize to Counselor Devlin for not calling you back in.
And I looked for all the communities to see how they performed, and, and I couldn't find anything online. So one of the things I want to do is take this opportunity to congratulate Ethan Manning, the director of, finance director, and the whole finance team, because if you go, and this is for the public, if you go to the city webpage, if you go to the finance department, if you look under budget documents and finance documents, you will find more information about our budget than you will find anywhere else. And I mention this because, quite frankly, I'm tired of hearing people out there, the public, say, no one in this city understands the budget, all right? Believe me, there are people in this building, not, not us, we don't understand, but there are, the people in the finance department understand the budget. Out there, what you need to say is you disagree with the policy decisions and the priorities that we put on the budget, all right? Now, having said that, you know, of the, 87% of that, .9% on transfers are made up by snow and ice, gas for DPS, overtime, police and fire, and, and legal, which is a, which is a transfer, that's 87%. So, you know, those are sort of anticipated transfers that are necessary in the budget process. So I give it, I'm going to sound like the president, I give that an A+ our budget process last year. Some of the other things, then. In, in revenue, I would point out that, and, and that's on the spending side, on the revenue side, the meals excise was up 6.1% over last year. We've had some discussions, some concern with the increase in parking rates, that that might, that might discourage people from, from going to restaurants, that's one measure that you can use, and so meals look fine, there was one mid-year report where they didn't look good, that looks good. Building permits are up 120% over last year, that's an amount of $94,000. There was some discussion that perhaps some of the zoning things were discouraging building, I think that category is volatile, but that's a, the alterations, permits are down 42.4% down amongst $40,435, and so, you know, that, I think we'd have to say perhaps the building commissioner might have a point, but it was our intent to pass, say, R3 to R2, and there, and we need to acknowledge there may be a cost to it. But then again, it could be nine years into the economic recovery that everyone's going to alter their house, has done so, right, at this point. So also, the last, the, the final thing on revenue I'd like to mention is we've had a, a great return on investment of 117%, which is $85,000 over last year, 117% over last year. Finally, the, on the enterprise, water is down 4.2% from the prior year, which is, and mostly that's due to billing, and so the, and, and you see the same thing with sewage down 3.7%. And so the analysis is greater conservation is leading people to use less water, and that's therefore less sewage, and so what we're seeing is declining balances in, in those enterprise accounts. That's just watching it, and that's it, that's all that matters.
Thank you, Counsel.
I urge you, the committee voted 3-0 to recommend receive and file.
Receive and file, no, this is not a screw.
Yeah, yeah. And motion, I, can I withdraw my motion to approve?
You may.
Thank you. Who's second?
I believe I do.
All right, motion to receive and file.
Second.
Seconded. So the motion is to receive and file, we've heard the discussion, and we have had an opportunity to comment on it, would anyone else wish to comment on that? Hearing the nulls and favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, good. Is that it?
That is it.
Education? Yes, fair, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had our first meeting with the new superintendent last week, which was, was really nice. We started with a discussion, we asked the superintendent to give us his vision that he had shared with the teachers the first day, his vision of, of where the department was, the, the school department was going to go, which was really nice. We had three questions that we, that we asked him, one was about the school grounds, an update on technology, and then we got into the new high school rules, which I know are a bone of contention, so. In regards to the maintaining the school grounds, the, the school department hired a grind, a groundskeeper this year. So the groundskeeper is actually cutting the playing fields and maintaining the, the school grounds, which is a departure from what we've been doing in the past. There were some rumors that the Parks Department was going to take it over, so we basically got it right from the superintendent that there is a new groundskeeper on there, on the staff. We got an update on our, on the new technology that we approved for the high school, and the, the update is, at the high school, 100% of the projectors are installed and, in operation. 100% of the administrative computers, the desktop computers are installed and, in operation. The sixth and seventh graders have new Chromebooks, and the eighth graders have newly refurbished Chromebooks, and everything is, is going well on that. As far as the, the new high school rules, which, this was probably the, the most interesting part of the conversation that we had, is, I didn't know this, maybe you folks did, but of the conversation that we had, is, I didn't know this, maybe you folks did, but the new principal has actually been meeting with focus groups since March. So he's been meeting with parents and students and teachers to find out, you know, what's good, what's bad, what could, what could use improvement. And the three things that sort of came back from everybody is attendance, tardiness, and children wandering in the hallways. And so he set up new rules, which I know you all heard about, 'cause I got all around the city. I think there was even an online petition going from the, from the students about the rules. And what the, what the principal did, which was really interesting, is he went to the students and said, these are the new rules. But in room 118, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put up two posters. And on one poster, you can write the rules that you don't like, and then the other poster, you have to give me a solution. And so he sent that out to the kids, the teachers, and the parents to say, if you don't like the new rules, let me know what you don't like, but you can't walk away unless you give me a solution. And what the principal's plan is, is to take all the solutions and then reformulate new rules coming at a later date. So it's a very good exercise, and as from some, as somebody who's had two children that have graduated from high school, I do see what they identified, and I do agree with it. And it's nice to see that we're sort of bringing this discipline back, and it would be great to see where they sort of expand this to with the help of the kids. So it was a great meeting. And so we kicked it off good with the new superintendent. Thank you.
Hearing good, good things from, from people about both of them. There's nothing coming out of general government, license and permits?
Yes, there is. Motion to move ordinance 23, waterways.
23. Was there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of taking this out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilor Earls.
Okay, it's getting late, so I'll try to make this fairly quick. This should be the most difficult one tonight from me. The impetus of this was that a boater or two had a 16-foot or under craft and said, there's no ordinance written down, even though there's signs that are at the waterways, there's no ordinance written that there's any fee. There's fees, there's fees in the ordinance for everything 17 feet and above. So what the, what the Harbor Commission wanted to do is codify this and basically make it so that there is now an ordinance that matches the signs. And that would simply read that a 16-foot or under is a $20 flat fee for the season. That's for the waterway permit. We talked about where'd that number come from. That number was historical, so there was no new data on it, but they think it came back from the 80s, has been risen ever since. Also in this, what they want to do is they want to take, out of the ordinance, they want to take dollar figures out. What they want to do is, much like the parking program, they want to put it, what the Harbor Commission and council votes upon, so it's a separate item, so that we don't have to redo the ordinance every time they want to do a change in the fee. I think that, the council thought that that was, I'm sorry, the committee thought that that was fair, and we came out 3-0 in favor.
Thank you. Further discussion. Councilor Zede.
I just, first thing is, I don't see how changing the ordinance to match a sign is a justification to create effectively illegally a new fee. I understand they may have been collecting it for 20 years, but, so what is the, what is the reason for the fee and where does the money go? That's the first question. Second is, the second part of your comments about not codifying the dollars, did I miss? I mean, it says the dollar amounts in the ordinance here, unless the version in the packet's old, it still says $4 per foot and $3 per foot boats under 17, $20. Was there a new version?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're looking at, but there is a new version with no dollar amount.
So that's not what's in the packet? Just, just, it's the, it looks like it's just the original version, ordinance 23, 529. Something else happened that I missed?
Councilor Earls?
Dr. Spahn? I have one that I thought was coming out, and the charts have been deleted. I thought that was the one that was coming out. If I'm wrong, then we'll put it back and wait two more weeks.
The only thing I have is the late file that was put in on 529.
Okay, then we'll wait two more weeks. Again, it's the end of the season, it won't be the end of the world, but you had another question I'd like to respond to, the fees. The $20 is because these boats are small crafts, they typically are rubber crafts, basically got the larger vessels, and when they become loose in storms, the harbor master has to come out and basically get them. They're not tied up like larger vessels. So they get loose, I don't wanna say often, they get loose more often than the larger vessels. So they thought between the administrative fee, the actual cost that it takes to regain the safety of these boats, that it was a reasonable fee.
They're not moored, they're tied up on docks.
They're tied on docks.
With the tides, they go up, they go back, they go up, then they untie themselves. Councilor Tantar?
Did speak to the harbor master about this, and he noted that, you know, in this recent rainstorm, they, I mean, they have to use resources, it costs money, they go around and they have to pump out a lot of these, a lot of these.
Inflatables.
Skiffs. They get loose, he said, he gave me the example, say, say one goes down to the mouth of the river, they don't know whether there was someone on it or not someone on it by someone coming and paying a $20 fee. They, they know it, they have an email or phone, they can call immediately, save a lot of expense, both to the harbor master and the coast guard to, so, you know, again, it's been in place since the beginning of time, and it's not an increase in what has historically been paid, and there are costs associated with having them be dinged in this.
Are we going forward with this, or?
Councilor Vogel?
Just add real quick that if a boat goes out there and they can't find out who it belongs to, they have to get the coast guard in, it's a rescue.
A search.
A search and rescue.
Councilor Earls?
I mean, I could ask to suspend the rules, I'm not trying to do anything underhanded here, I think it's fairly straightforward. I don't think it'll, it'll, it's not an emergency at this point, two more weeks won't really matter if we want to move it along. Again, it's, you know, I can make copies of this that you can review for five minutes, but perhaps it's what the council feels. I mean, it's not, there's nothing underhanded here, it's very simple, it's very simplifying things, it's taking the charts with the dollar figures and the links out, basically.
I can read it into the record.
I think that might be fine, just read it into the record, and, and that's the item before us.
Can we do it next time?
It's getting late, though.
It is getting late.
I would ask the, yeah, the council to withdraw, and let's bring it back in.
I withdraw, and my apologies.
Thank you, Councilor.
Do we need to recommit it if it was out?
Yeah.
Motion to refer.
Motion to play back.
Second.
The movement, I'm sorry, who made a motion?
I did.
The clerk cannot make a motion.
Motion.
At-large, Councilor.
Motion to refer, I pull my original motion. We did that.
Did that.
And then a motion to refer it back to license and permit.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to refer communication 65.
A late file on outdoor seating. Second.
65?
Yep.
Yes, motion to approve.
Let's get it out first, we have a second. All those in favor taking this out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We didn't talk about that.
This is 65, the late file on outdoor seating.
This is, we actually did vote on this, and what we did is we wanted a little bit more information.
Yeah.
If you look at the map here, there are two sets of, there are four sets of tables at the top of the drawing, which is basically to the north, and then there are additional tables. The one table that the committee could not approve because of distance was the one, I'm not sure how to describe, the one to the left of the middle. So everything else, the four to the top of the drawing, the one at the bottom, and the one between those two, closer to the building, is what we could approve, given the distances between light poles, garbage cans, and curb. Did you take this one out?
Thank you.
Yes, take that one out, please. So there's one table being eliminated. We did vote on this, and to keep them within the season before we could do a little bit more research, we did, and this is what we came out with.
Further discussion. Further discussion. Councilor Zede?
So, just really quick, so this, this will be a one-year approval, because it's a new seating application, and I know, I know that they were probably valid when we passed the last part, but everything's out of date now on the, on the certificate, so I think it's actually codified in the ordinance that a condition of having a valid permit is having insurance, but since we're approving it now, and same, same old story, city of Newburyport is additional insured, where required, it's required, I'm requiring it or we're requiring it, so I think we did the same exact thing, but this is the original version of that, so.
I'll do it again.
With those covenants or with those thoughts?
Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to refer communication 71.
71 out of committee. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's out?
Motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file, is there a second? Councilor Zede seconded. Discussion, Councilor Earls?
It was the committee's decision in consultation with the clerk, that we really don't have any purview here. They're not asked for a license, this is basically just someone driving their car around, almost like an Uber. So we really don't have any, there's no taxi, there's no livery, so basically if they want to do this business, it's not up to the city council one way or the other.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to move communication 76.
76 on the A-frames. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilor Devlin.
Discussion, Councilor Earls?
I think, but it's very self-explanatory, the committee was 3-0 in favor of this, there's two locations being requested, that they show the signs, they show the locations fairly clearly, and we see no problem with it whatsoever.
Further discussion. Councilor Zede?
So I'm the asterisk on all these, so this is a variance, so it's good for one year as well, that they need to come back for the location next year.
Very good, thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Councilor Earls?
Motion to pull communication 64 out of committee, please.
64.
64.
Second. 64. Previous page, A-frame sign on sea bags. It's second, is all those in favor removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, it's out?
Motion to approve with revisions.
Is there a second?
First.
Further discussion. Councilor Earls?
The committee decided that this sign should be adjacent to the building, within the rules that the city council has set. They want it off the, off-site, but we see no compelling reason that it should be off-site.
Councilor Zede?
So if we're not granting a variance on the location, why would we approve it at all? Wouldn't we just receive and file it, and they go under the ordinance? I mean, you're, if they're gonna be within the law, there's nothing for us to approve, right? Did I misunderstand?
Councilor Earls?
We still have to approve the A-frame sign. We're not allowing them the location they wanted, we're allowing them adjacent to the building, but we still have to allow them to sign. We still have to give the permit for the sign. Maybe it's late.
As a longtime, yeah, longtime writer of the ordinance. If they're doing it within the bounds of the, of the ordinance, they don't need our approval. So when you say adjacent to the building, do you mean on the wall within four feet of the door? That's something we spent hours and years on, so they don't need us to do that, that's the whole point.
The clerk can do it.
It's not the first year they did need us.
Only if it's a variance, only if they want to exceed the rules.
He's right. They just go to Rich. That's cool.
Did you want to speak?
Then most, I'll pull my motion, motion to.
Receive and file.
Receive and file.
Works for me.
Did you move to withdraw your motion?
Yep.
With the receiving file?
Please. Is there a second for that?
Okay.
Councilor Devlin? Is the second. Discussion, Councilor Zede?
Yeah, just for, so they actually took a picture of the ordinance in their application, and you'll note just for future that table, you know, 1215 says A-frame size, city council approval not required. So it's only if they want to exceed, that's the whole point, is we don't want to drag people in here to do things they can already do.
I misunderstood, first year.
We're good. Anything else, Counselor?
Yes.
I voted.
Receiving file, yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry?
You need to vote on that.
We need to vote that. All those in favor of the receiving file, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to remove communication 81 from the table.
Second. Move the second, remove 81. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilor?
Motion to approve with variance.
Motion to approve with variance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those, excuse me. Discussion, Councilor Earls?
This is Angry Donut, it is, I ask.
Sorry.
We are allowing them to move the sign a bit off, to be adjacent onto the corner of Winter and Washington. The original request was to be on the rail trail, so it is not adjacent to the building by right, and thank you, I'm not being wishy-washy at all, thank you. And so it was 3-0 that this would be approved at that location, corner of Winter and Washington.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
And a motion to remove communication 75.
Second.
Oh, I thought you did that last time.
75, I believe Councilor Vogel has to recuse himself. Thank you, Counselor. Motion to remove from committee, communication 75. Was there a second?
Tagging.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Tagging.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Councilor Earls?
Simple table and chairs, they fit all the parameters, and it was approved 2-0 with one recusing.
Further discussion, Counselor?
Insurance binder, none, none in the packet. Did they have one?
Yeah, it's the second page, it's not the last page.
And are we going to require the language change that we?
It was the third page.
Oh, it didn't come in the packet?
Yeah, it wasn't in the packet, it got cut off. A slice of it.
Is it good?
Evidence of it.
Timely?
Further discussion?
There's a question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that will be all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Neighborhood City Services has a moot point tonight. Planning and Development?
Are we doing the farm? Okay.
Motion to remove appointment 49, Mark Moore.
67 Curzon Mill Road to the ZDA.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Mr. President, we had Mr. Moore in for a public hearing. Jeanette Isabella of One Lime Street was the sole testifier. We asked him various questions, and we recommend his approval 3 to nothing.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, it is a roll-call vote, I'm corrected.
The appointment of Mark Moore, Councilor Tantar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Zede.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Agum.
Yes.
Councilor Jinta.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Sean.
Yes.
Is there anything else, Counselor?
Yes, I just want to schedule the hearing on marijuana, and through the chair, if you recognize the director, because we have a statutory limitation, he can explain.
Thank you. Based on the statutory requirements, I just want to make sure that the council is aware tonight, because I know that some of the councils have expressed concern about not understanding some of the details. In this particular instance, the vehicle that you're using for the zoning amendment, which is the ordinance, I think, 24, there's only until the first week of November to act on that, which so means that you only have two meetings in October to do first and second reading, so whatever committee meeting happens would happen now, have to happen for the first meeting in October, and you would need to act on it in October.
Okay, so our first meeting is the ninth, so if everyone could please pull out your calendar and let me know what's possible. I open the bidding at, I open the bidding at Monday, October 1st, at 6:30.
I'm in.
Yep.
I'm in.
Any objections? Monday, the first, 6:30. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Ladies.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to circulate a notice on that to all the members.
Nothing further tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Planning and development is done. Public safety?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Counselor. Public utilities?
Nothing tonight.
Rules?
Nothing tonight.